Sure.
Yes, good to see you too.
Nice to see you Scott.
Joel Greenberg.
Very good, nice to meet you.
Linda Blake. Nice to meet you Scott.
Nice to meet you also.
Scott, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Mike Collins and start the meeting. This is a special meeting of the Now Then City Council. Thursday, July fourteenth, twenty twenty, four o'clock in the afternoon. And the purpose of this special meeting is to conduct interviews for the administrator position in the city of Now Then. So we have three candidates tonight. We have two candidates on Tuesday and we will interview and follow up with the discussion this evening. Scott, for your benefit, what we're going to do here is you have one hour. Pat is our timekeeper. We get about halfway through, he lets us know if we're ahead or behind the game and you can adjust your answers accordingly. All questions, which we have eighteen for us and one you get to ask us at the end. Frank will be.
The moderator.
Moderator if you can get his.
Maybe.
It's not, it's for real, I can't tell.
So now you guys ask me, can I get that one?
Yeah.
No, you, the last one is you have questions for us.
Oh, gotcha.
It says plural on our sheet here. But like I say, we have an hour and so plan accordingly, but Frank will ask each of his questions. We will be writing notes as we listen to your answers.
So Mayor, would you like you to do roll call?
Oh, yeah.
Mayor Pilon?
Here.
Councilmember Alders?
Here.
Councilmember Blake?
Here.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Here.
Councilmember Rainville?
Present.
Thank you.
Alright, and then also as interim administrator Frank Boils and consultant from DDA Pat Melvin. Alright, so Scott, Frank will start the questions and we'll go there.
Question one. Please tell us what interests you about the Now Then administrative, administrator position? And highlight key qualifications that make you the best person for the job.
So I think what interests me in the, the position of the city administrator in Now Then is, is a lot of what the city stands for is kind of what I find very intriguing. When I take a look at some of the cities that are around the city of Now Then, larger cities, I like, you know, what I've been looking at here is, is the larger lot sizes. A lot of what I see here in Now Then is kind of what we found when I moved my family to Zimmerman, you know, you have the, the fields and the crops and the horses and a lot of the stuff that went along with that. Again, in this kind of an area, but I think a part of what I'm looking, why I'm looking at this position as a city administrator, I think the skillset that I bring from my previous job or employment really kind of parlay's into what a city administrator does. For the last five years, I've been looking at city, at what would it be like to be a city administrator, talking to folks, going through some of that while I was still employed. And what I, what I've found out is there are a lot of things that I, that I did in my previous role that I, that I helped with city administrators, city attorneys and so on and so forth. One of the examples of that I'll give you is, is I worked with quite a few cities doing franchise agreements and franchise fees. When my office was in Coop Rapids, so a lot of the time I would be coming through this area, I had met with other city administrators in this area, but my territory went all the way out to Wilmer, Alexandria, up to Brainerd and back down. So I dealt with a lot of different administrators, a lot of different cities and a lot of different situations that all of them had. So I, I think, you know, my people skills, being, my critical thinking skills, I'm a people person, I like to be able to hear what people have to say. I'm firm but fair. I think if you talk to people that have, have worked with me before, they would tell you that he's, he's a really good person to work with and he, and he knows the stuff, he studies and is, you know, I like attention to detail, I'm a numbers guy, I watch the budgets, you know, that type of stuff. So I think in the city administrator role, there's a lot of things that this city has to offer and I think there's a lot of things that will be coming up for the city of Now Then here. That would, would be something that I would be able to, to help with as we navigate through those.
Very good. Question two. Please describe your supervisory and management style and how that style facilitates teamwork among and between city council, staff and contractual employees.
Just close and ask, can I be asked them one more time?
Sure. Please describe your supervisory and management style. How does that style facilitate teamwork among and between city council members, staff and contracted employees?
Sure, so my management and supervisory style that you're asking for would be pretty direct, hands-on. I like to learn what I'm talking to folks about or training with folks about. I'm a big team player. I think one of the key things of being a team player is, is open and clear communication, both, you know, up and down, which means making sure that the staff is very clear on direction and also that the administrator is very clear on what the direction is given from the city council. And then follow-up, you know, I, I think you don't want to leave things out there, you want to close the loop. If somebody on the city council is asking some questions or, or needs some additional information, you make sure you get that information back in a timely fashion. You ask for style, you know, what I've done in the past is, is when I had meetings with my staff, we would get together weekly just to talk about the big items that were going on, getting weekly updates and then I would update my, my boss at that time on just kind of what the progress was. So I would see a lot of that here, meaning this is the information that, that the administrator and the staff gathered, this is what the request was from the council, this is what we found out here, this is the additional information. Okay, councilor, would you like to go with it from there? I think the same thing with staff is, is just being able to communicate with them, making sure they know what the direction is and which way everybody's going and, and hear what they have to say. You know, a lot of times staff has some great ideas and in a conversation I recently had with, with Mr. Boils, you know, there's, there's a lot of good things that are happening in that office and, and a lot of people having ideas and figuring things out as, as they go along and, and we want to continue to add to that and bring to that. As far as dealing with contractors go, I'm very familiar with dealing with contractors. I've had to deal with contractors in many different capacities. Some of it was, you know, on repair work or utility work, some of it's from dealing with engineering groups and, and a lot of, a lot of third parties if you will. We have a select group of contractors that worked with us, that did work for us. Someone was installing HVA secrete and someone was putting eight-inch gas in there, someone was, has a lot of her aspects to it. And I was in, I was part of the negotiating contract, negotiating the contracts with those groups of people that were out there, so that fell into my preview to PO to, to be a part of that group, so. That was a long-winded answer to.
A long-winded question. Question three is no shorter. Please share examples of staff and coworkers that you have supervised and/or influenced to be, to advance, to seek advancement in the organization or outside the organization. What role did you play in assisting them to become more successful in their careers?
So the example I'll, I'll use for that would be an individual, it started from the hiring process. So when I hired this individual, I'll give you some, a little bit of the background as it make more sense. He was a twenty-one-year veteran from the Army and he was a sniper. And doesn't, being a, being a sniper in the military doesn't necessarily translate right into being, you know, working at the gas company, but he had some, a lot of leadership skills. And, and when he came on board, him and I worked together quite extensively and I got him into leadership program and continued to mentor him and coach him. We had meetings on an annual basis. He was stationed out of Brainerd in one of my remote offices, so we were getting together on a regular basis. And what I did is I continued to encourage him to, to, to learn more, be part of it, learning the culture. He didn't have experience at the gas company. So I put him and gave him opportunities to be able to learn more and be part of some of those groups that, that were, were kind of moving and shaking along that, along those lines. He actually did get promoted. Him and I have worked together for quite a while and he's, he's what, him and I can continue to communicate to this day about how things went and, and what he's doing now and so on.
Question four. Please describe a team that you recently led and the task. What made the team work, or on the other hand, not work? Let me, let me restate that because I think I botched it. Please describe a team that you recently led and the task. What did or did not make the team successful?
So I'm going to go with being the president of the Zimmerman Chamber of Commerce. And it was a, it was a small group at the time and we added some additional business owners to the Chamber of Congress there. But when you asked one of the things, so I, so I led that team for two consecutive terms. And we continually added members to it, we added, got businesses involved in it, we did things around the city to, to make the chamber more visible. But one of the things that we'd get a hiccup with every once in a while is when people weren't showing up. So we really wanted to make sure that we were proactively talking to the people that were on the board to make sure that they were showing up. A lot of these meetings happened during the day, I understand that people are running their businesses, doing their things, managing their, their situations, but we, but attendance was key. So we needed to make sure that we were reaching out, being proactive and making sure people were showing up for the meetings. I don't have a lot to say about anything of the negative of that because that was a very good experience. It was a very learned to ask to stand for a second term because we were putting some things in place. But being kind of the leader of that group and, and the, and the leader of the chamber in the city, which was kind of me and that I lived in, it just kind of gave me that much more. My value, I felt that, you know, built value and felt kind of proud to be a part of that, so.
Frank, can I ask a follow-up there?
Sure.
So what did, what did you do to make it successful? What, you know, so you were two-term president, but.
Sure, so what I did to do that was I did some of the calling to be able to do it, but what my, what one of my, to make sure people were coming to the meeting to, to follow up on that. But what I enjoyed the most and what I did to help make the whole chamber successful is I was out meeting with business owners. I enjoyed that face-to-face shaking hands, how are things going, how can we help things be better? You've been, you've been a member of the chamber in the past, you haven't been active lately, what can we do to get you back? You know, kind of listening to what some of their concerns may have been, you know, prior to my arrival and stuff, but it was out there hearing what the businesses in the community were saying and how they thought the chamber might be able to talk to them. So that's what I enjoyed the most about it and that's what I specifically did my part, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Question five.
Sure.
Some councils are more involved in day-to-day events and affairs. How would you manage this to the city's best interests?
So me personally, I think it's very key that the city is involved and I agree with you, some cities are more involved than, than others, that are the councils I should say. But I think if the, if the council's involved and they know the direction on where things need to be going and they're in constant communication with the city administrator, I think that would be a good thing. I think that is key to be able to have a smooth organization running. I, I don't think a city administrator out there kind of doing their own thing and then updating the city council as they go along is necessarily productive if you will. I, I think there's, there's, there's room for problems with when that's happening. Not to say that a city administrator can't be given a task and out getting things done and moving and shaking and, and that, but I, I think we got to make sure that the city council and the administration, the staff and everybody is kind of in alignment on where things are going. And that the approval starts with the council and then it kind of goes from there. You don't want some rogue city administrator out there kind of doing their own things. I'm guessing is what you're looking for. And that's not me, so. I like being a part of a team, I don't like just being out there, so.
Question six. How have your work actions benefited previous employers?
How has my work action benefited previous employers? Okay. Well, you know, I'll go back to what I said earlier, I think, I think I'm very fair and, and I've built some very, very strong teams. I had eight direct supervisors and I hired every one of them, so my hand has been on that, which I was very proud of. You know, nobody outworked me. The phone rang at two o'clock in the morning, there was something going on in Alexandria, nine times out of ten I'd meet my supervisors out there that were on the way. I was one of those managers that wanted to, to be part of it, to show the support, the front row, to tell you the social portion, my supervisors and all that. And, and that got, that, not that I was looking for recognition necessarily, but that got out there, people knew that if something was happening in Scottsburg, he was going to be there. When we lost the, I hope I'm not jumping again, I broke the other thing, but when we lost the city of Haynesville here not so long ago, when we had gas on the whole city. Spent three and a half days up there living in a hotel with all the employees trying to get things done out there, it's just, the employer would tell you that he's hardworking, he knows what it takes to get the job done, if he'll get the job done, he'll get it done. And he'll do it with the rest of his team because he's not on an island by himself, so.
Thank you. Question seven. Describe a controversial situation that you were part of which involved public scrutiny as well and media attention. How did you handle the situation and what was the outcome?
And you asked me to use that example, are you ready to bring me another one? So I'm going to go back to the, I'm going to go back to the Haynesville situation, but I'm not going to repeat what I already told you about Haynesville. Is that fair? Okay, so back to what you were talking about, so it had media scrutiny, it certainly did. So what happened out there, just to give you a little bit of background, is there was a, and I don't remember now, it's been a little bit, it was either six-inch or an eight-inch main that ran into the city of Haynesville from the town border station. There were some contractors that are out there working there, trying to put some sleeving in underneath railroad bridge, or excuse me, railroad tracks that went through the city council. What they did is they ended up getting into that steel main and you can't, you can't squeeze that off. So what we ended up having to do to make the situation safe was to be able to shut down gas too, and this doesn't happen all in office, so there's no worry. But we had to shut gas off to about three thousand customers, city of Haynesville's about three thousand customers under that. The kicker where it gets into the whole controversy in the media and all that kind of stuff, Mr. Boils, what you're asking there was, is we had to shut the railroad down because it's right at the railroad. And if any of you have ever dealt with railroad and all that kind of stuff, they're not real open to trains sitting on the tracks and not moving and all that kind of stuff that, you know, time is money, but unfortunately we were not able to. So I sat in multiple meetings the first twenty-four hours with representatives from the railroad, talking about when they're going to be able to get their stuff through and I had to keep explaining to them why we couldn't do it. We also had customers that were concerned about, you know, gas getting off at their house. I failed to say this, it wasn't very warm up when this was happening, so we had to deal with, you know, heat. The media was out there because it doesn't happen all that often and when you have, you know, a hundred center front energy trucks lined up in the near downtown area, it, you know, brings attention. Along with that, they had a hospital there and they had an assisted living that was tied there in Haynesville. So we had to bring what we call model trucks, or we had to bring C and G trailers off from the cities to hook up to those facilities so we could continue to operate those facilities. So everybody was on heightened alert and everybody had their piece, the railroad wanted, you know, a piece of me, the, the hospital wanted, everybody kind of, and, and it went on for, like I said, three and a half days until we were able to get everybody back up and running and, and gas on. But it was, it was all hands on deck, it was a lot of work and there was a lot of scrutiny and oversight and having your fingers in other people's business, they get what they say sometimes.
Well, good job.
Thank you.
How, how long ago was that?
How long ago? Two years ago though, I think it was.
Question eight.
Yes, sir.
Describe how you believe the relationship between the city administrator and the city council should function.
I, I, me personally, how I would like to see that function was the city administrator being the hands and feet of the city council to be able to get the information that the city council's looking for. I'm not going to speculate on different things that that might be, but you know, the, the, the city council would give direction on whatever it might be. City administrator would go and get the information out there looking for and report back in a timely fashion, share the findings, share maybe your, your opinion or, or certain things that you found along the way. I would like to think that the city would be open to the city administrators, or the council would be open to the city administrator's opinion on certain things and all that. But at the end of the day, we understand that, that the city council's in charge and, and they make the decisions and once those decisions are made, then it's the city administrator's job to carry that out. No matter if the city administrator is a hundred percent on board or not on board, it really is irrelevant. Everybody's on board when you walk out of the meeting, the city administrator's a hundred, a hundred percent on board and, and the message gets carried out and, and, and we go from there. I think it's key that the city administrator knows their role, they know where their role plays in the big scheme.
Question nine. Please describe your involvement in budgeting and financial processes of your organization as well as your experience in long-range financial planning.
So for years I have been very involved in all aspects of what you just asked for, short-term, long-term, capital plans, so I'll kind of touch on that a little bit. So every year in July, we would make sure that we have our staffing and all our reports ready for financials for the following year. And then we had a three-year plan, and then we had a five-year plan, and then we had a ten-year plan. And then we had a capital plan that sometimes went out further than that depending upon what kind of pieces of equipment we were looking at. Ultimately, at the end of the day, when I shared earlier, you know, sixty-five, a hundred and sixty-five people are just lost before with eight supervisors and three administrative assistants. When you add all those different areas up and what those individuals did was about a ten million dollar budget that I was a little over a ten million dollar budget. That's excluding the capital, capital kind of swing up and down, so I did not put that in my resume, but if you were to add capital on that, you can add a couple million dollars here on top of that. So we needed to be able to first of all justify staffing on a short term, then we looked at our three-to-year, three-to-five-year plan and what it's going to take from O and M all the way to capital, to staffing, to, you know, tools and equipment, everything under the sun that took to do that job in my area. So the money you had and you needed to project on how you were going to use it, and maybe it was a replacement tool or maybe it was a new tool that needed to be added or something to that. And then when it came to equipment, we dealt with rail liners, flatbed, trailers, backhoes, all that kind of stuff, and that was a lot of our capital purchases. If we had larger pieces of equipment over five hundred dollars an individual, then we could capitalize that. But at any given day I was, or in any given year where everyone looked at, I was ultimately responsible for a ten million dollar budget to, to make sure it came out of budget.
You're saying that was an operating budget?
I'm sorry?
That was an operating budget? The ten million?
The ten million was an operating budget, yes, yes, and then the capital was on top of that. Right, yeah.
Question ten.
I would just, so we're about the halfway point, we're just short of halfway point and we're on question ten, just so you know. Don't break.
Sure, can I just speed up a little bit?
You're right on track.
You're, you're right on track. If you can talk faster, I'd be. No, you're right, you're doing fine.
Question ten. What have you previously done to educate new members about council members in this case, but I presume this also applies to, you know, peer subordinates, et cetera? About finances and keeping members apprised of changes in the budget? I'll try it again.
Okay.
What have you previously done to educate new members, in this case, city council members, about finances and keeping those same members apprised of changes in the budget?
So if I understand this question correctly, and I think I do, what I find out with new members to be able to bring them up to speed on the budgets? Or where you're getting me is you're talking specifically just council members, not necessarily in my past life?
That's what this question applies to, as I understand, but if you don't have that specific, you could, any supervisor.
Sure, sure. So I, how I would go about that is, is what I've done in the past is when I've had new supervisors or new individuals that have come with me, we sit down and we, and we take a look at the budget and how the budget, explain how the budget is put together and all the things that go in a certain line, I expect. What I, and, and the one was we, we used cost centers, which was, that, that's what we used, so each individual had a cost center with the cost elements underneath it with the money loaded in there. And, and it was my responsibility as a direct report to be able to explain to them all about, about that work. How I would see that working in, in the city council setting would be to, for me to first understand the budgeting process to the point where I can teach it to somebody else. Which I don't think that would be an issue whatsoever, but I'm not naive enough to think that there isn't just a little bit different financing when it comes to dealing with the city than it was dealing with a private sector, which I understand it. And I have done some research and I have been working on understanding that better. You know, I have reached out to the leaders of the cities on multiple different occasions, learning different things there. And one of the things that I've been reaching out to them was, is elections and also the financing, because I understand that the financing is just a little bit different. So been educating myself on that, but once I was up to speed and I felt like I could come to Mayor Pilon and explain to him the budget and how the budget works and all that kind of stuff, I would sit down and we would just go through that line and, and that. Like I said earlier, I'm a big numbers guy, I always got a matchup that the budgets need to come in on, there's a reason I want to go through the budgeting process and, and it's, it's something I watch on a regular basis, so.
Did you have to explain to your superiors if a budget changed, if, like you said, your cost centers, if something went amiss?
Yeah, so there was, so we had, thank you for asking that, I missed that piece of, Mr. Mayor. We had quarterly updates that we sat down with first of all our staff, if there's been any changes, and then we had to report up. And then certainly when we got into the third quarter and moving into the fourth quarter, we needed to let all our finance people know all the things we're going to adjust. You tried to do everything in your ability to not adjust those. Sometimes they need to be adjusted, for example, I'll give you an example, why you need to adjust one. It's maybe we determined, you know, the previous year that we needed X amount of people. And then we realized when we got into that next year that we needed more people. And so maybe we were going to go a little over budget on staffing because we were bringing more folks in. Happened from occasion, but you need to make sure you're letting somebody know that. Surprises aren't a, aren't a good thing when it comes to that. So I appreciate you asking that question. Again, I missed that piece of it. But you definitely were reporting, you know, we all looked at our budgets on a monthly basis and then we had regular meetings quarterly and then reported up on a quarterly basis if there's any adjustments.
Question eleven. Describe how you would communicate and build trust with the city council and with the staff.
Sure. I, I think building trust with the city council would be, first of all, giving to know each individual and, and what's important to them and their style and how they like to be communicated with. Maybe somebody would rather be communicated through an email, maybe somebody would rather be communicated through a phone call, whatever that style may be. And then I think as far as being able to, to get to know the, the council members, the council members get to know you, and then just a regular cadence that goes along with, you know, how often you want to communicate back and forth. I'm a big communicating person. I, I love to communicate. I, I communicate every week with my staff. Some of you might be sitting here saying, no, I don't want to hear from you weekly. Or some of you are saying, maybe I want to hear from you more than weekly, I don't know. But whatever that style may be, it would be my job to decide what, or my job to figure out what that is and, and, and communicate to you in a way that we find to be adequate.
Question twelve. How would you balance the residents' desire to remain rural with the developers' desire to want more development?
Well, I, I, I think it's a, it's a fine line because I believe that the residents of Now Then in, in a large portion are out there because of some of the rural and, and being able to have some room to be able to have their animals, whatever, whatever the situation may be there for them. But I think there's got to be some common ground when it comes to developing. And, and if, if you're going to develop, you know, maybe there, there's some things that can happen with a developer that still fits in the, the comp plan that, that the city has in place till 2040, right? So that comp plan was very specific on what could happen and when it could happen and, and how, how it's going to look going forward and, and what some of the differences might be going forward. I do believe that I've heard that there has been some developing going on here a little bit where there's been some compromise a little bit on some of the sizes that, that might have been going on. So I think to explain that just a pair better than Mr. Paul is what I would say is that the city's going to change somewhat, you know, as far as roads coming in. I know part of the comp plan, they're talking about, you know, twenty two year, possibly be a four lane road at some point. So there are certain things that might change. But I think the overarching feel, at least I get to what I'm seeing in the comp plan and the work that was put into that comp plan to be able to talk about acres is, is the majority of the people want to still keep that rural feel out here and they still want to be able to feel like, you know, they could, they could move around a little bit. You know, we don't have multi dwelling housing in Now Then right now, which I know was on the docket. And, and roads might be changing and, and I don't see, I didn't see any plans there for bringing in sewer or water or anything like that. So for at least till 2040, from what I understand, this is, this is kind of a plan. But if somebody wants to come in and develop something or wants to, maybe that'd be a, a conversation that we'd have to have, bring to the council and council would have to have to see if there's anything they want to do outside of what the comp plan is already calling for.
Question thirteen. Tell us about your experience working with police, fire and emergency responders to create, maintain and exercise an emergency management plan.
So I have managed multiple EOPs, emergency operations plans in my twenty eight years. One of them was the one I'll share with you and I promise I won't go back to Panesville again. There's been many other ones, but I also, some of you may know or not know, the reserve of the, of River Police Department. I was a sergeant with that. So there was EOPs and things we needed to do from, from the police. But in my role as a manager at Center Point Energy, I dealt with a lot of police, fire, min-ops, fat ops, I've dealt with counties. I've dealt with things from, from house fires, the house explosions to cities, like I said, out, mains that shut down parts of cities, buildings in downtown Alexandria that started on fire because of the gas. Do you know about that one?
I just remembered during the floods. No, that wasn't it. I just remembered the fires during the floods.
Oh, sure, sure. So, um, so in a lot of those cases, and I say this very humbly, I'm not, I'm not trying to be arrogant at all, but if those situations happen in, in the territory that I was responsible for, I was the only one. It's just, I was one of four people in the state of Minnesota that did what I did. And we each had our own area. So if it happened in your area, if the media wanted to come stick a microphone in your mouth or in your face, I should say, and want to ask you a few questions, you were the person that dealt with that. And we were all media relation. You, if you wanted to deal with the fire, if you want to deal with min-ops, I dealt a lot with the Minnesota Fire, Fire Marshal that came out investigating fires and stuff that happened in certain areas. I've been on, as a reserve, I've been on multiple crashes and injuries and, and, and medicals where you're, you're doing CPR and different things on individuals. So I've been a part of that, those situations, and, and I'll be honest, I really thrive in those. When, when, when the pressure turned up and things are happening and things got to, decisions got to be made and, and things need to be taken, taken care of, excuse me, that is, uh, that's, I'm in my wheelhouse when I'm doing that kind of stuff. It's, call me an adrenaline junkie or whatever you want to, but that's the stuff that I, I, not that I look for, but I don't have any problems getting in and taking charge of the thing that needs to be done while trying to keep everybody safe, the safety of our employees, safety of the residents, safety of the people that are involved, the safety of the public, all that kind of stuff. It's it, it's a, it's a big deal.
Question fourteen. Describe the steps that you would take to network and develop relationships with neighboring city administrators.
So I'll just take one step backwards where I talked about when I dealt with some of the cities with the franchise. I think the example franchise you're using. So I, I have and have been and will continue to network with city administrators in the area. I knew Kirk before he retired here in Ramsey. I've been talking with Brian, who is his replacement now that's in the city of Ramsey. Last week I talked to Kate over in St. Francis, who's a new city administrator there. I had dinner a few weeks ago with Jeff O'Neill and, and talked with him a little bit about his situation and what he was dealing with in Becker there. I know Cal Portner from being part of the police reserves there and also the city administrator in, in Upriver there. I know Cal real well and I've, I've worked with him on multiple different, different things. Oh, Lauren. I think Lauren's the fellow girl there, so it's like, so the, the whole point I'm trying to make there, not that I'm trying to just name drop and all that kind of stuff, but I, I want you to understand that I have and have been and will continue to reach out to those folks because I think they're a lot of value. When we did the RCA, I talked with a lot of those individuals, we put the RCA together for the, the interview process here. Just kind of talking about topics and different things. I talked to Rhonda over at, at Oak County. So I, I, I feel like I'm plugged in and I have a personality. I don't have any problem reaching out to these people and trying to get additional information or bringing information to them if they need it, or at least working together as a team to collaborate and be able to see what's going on in certain cities that would, you know, the information that are going on in cities around us that would be beneficial to the city of Now Then to be aware of and stuff.
Question fifteen. Describe your experience in working with other units of government to develop service partnerships.
Service partnerships. So I don't know if this is exactly what you're looking for, but, you know, I've, I've dealt with different parts of the government, even back to when I was, was in the military. Dealt with the government from that aspect. That's a little different, I'm sure, and not what you're looking for here. But what I, what I also have done recently dealing with the government and the VA is, is working with them as far as the program to recruit veterans to be able to get into the industry that we used to be in. So, you know, I dealt with different government entities when it comes to funding, you know, grants, to be able to see what money is available for some of the, the projects that we would do at Center Point Energy. Trying to think what I was looking at there. I think that's going to do it.
Question sixty. Describe how you would become involved in the Now Then community.
Sure. So I, I feel like I'm fairly involved in the Now Then community now, but not to say that it couldn't be, it couldn't be more. I really like this area. And I'll be honest, I've been watching the housing market here. If you can get a house in Now Then, good luck to you because they sell very, very quickly. So you really got to be on your game if you're, if you're watching. The, the other thing, I, I'll just name a few things. You know, years ago I had a friend of mine that I went to church with and he's in Long Island, lives in the area, but he got myself and my family involved in the Heritage Festival. And the first thing I ever did at the Heritage Festival was make pancakes in the morning and all that kind of stuff with, it's probably safe to say, Bob and his family and that type of stuff. But really enjoy the Heritage Festival and kind of what it stands for and how it brings it. I didn't realize, you know, people could create pumpkins the size they create pumpkins. And years, sorry, did I miss that? Oh, and years ago when my grandfather was still alive, we used to bring him annually to the, the threshing show. We enjoyed going to that. Now it's not, grandpa's not here any longer, but my kids enjoy that. The kids come to it. They, they're like, how does that, you know? Kind of a lost art, if you will, if you don't kind of educate yourself on how some of that stuff works. I, I bank next door with Carl and Michelle and Sue and, and them over there, so I do banking there. I've been to the car show here at the cabinet shop multiple times. Continue to attend the Heritage Festival. We, we really enjoy the Heritage Festival. And I'll just give you a side little note for what it's worth. Those of you that may like or not, Tommy B., the one man band that you guys have had for years up there, he's done four or five different events at my house personally now. And the only reason I met that guy is because I was here at the Heritage Festival. He's done graduations, he's done family reunions, he's done a lot of that kind of stuff. So I have friends that live in the city. I have fellow officers from Upriver that live in the city. I have friends from other aspects, contractors, all that kind of stuff that live in the city. My wife and I enjoy going down to Bootleggers every once in a while to have, have something to eat. Our family is in Coon Rapids, so it's a really easy jump back and forth. So it's about halfway if you want to get together. So, yeah, I think Farmers Market on Thursdays, I've attended quite a few times, the swing there. I don't always get grumpy, it's mini-domits, not every time, but I can pace myself a little bit with that. I see they got a barbecue place there today though, so maybe after this. So anyways, it's, it's a great city and I like what it stands for. And I'll be honest, the people are awesome and the people I deal with, I, I know folks that do business here in the city, own businesses in the city. It's just, it's a, it's a really cool place and the longer we can keep it that way is, I think it better be, you don't find cities like this, especially surrounded by all the other cities up there right now, so it's pretty cool.
Questions.
Right, really sidetracked, I'm sorry.
That was a great answer.
No, you weren't really sidetracked, just good luck.
Seventeen. Describe your experience in developing, coaching and holding employees accountable.
Sure. So that's, that's a big part of what I took a lot of pride in because if you do that portion or you're talking to Mr. Bo, well, that's what creates high functioning teams. And a little bit of my background, so I, I came from, or where we came, the background that I come from is what I'm trying to say, is we were in a union environment. So I have three different unions I dealt with. I did two, two labor unions and a clerical union. And there are certain ways that you performance manage when you're dealing with union employees and there's certain ways that you can performance manage if you will with non-union employees. So you just had to kind of understand the, the landscape and how you navigate through all that kind of stuff, which I, I never found to be an issue because at the end of the day, how I look at it is if you treat people right, no matter if they're in the union or not in the union, a lot of times you're going to get the correct behavior you're looking for. But to do that, you have to be very clear. You have to make sure you're setting ground rules. You have to make sure that you're setting expectations. There's going to be follow-up timelines. There's going to be, in some cases, you may have to put things on paper. There might be a performance improvement plan that's needed or there may be something that needs to be documented in there. But as far as dealing with and mentoring and coaching and, and my staff, I would always sit down with them. I had an open door policy. If you're looking to performance manage anybody or you have any issues that are going on, let's talk about it first. Two minds are better than one. Let's just make sure we're on the same page before you march out and deliver whatever it is you'd like to. And it just, it really fostered good teamwork and for having a good understanding of what's going on. As you can imagine, having a hundred and sixty five people out there that are doing different things, it's good to kind of understand kind of what's going on, especially as spread out as they were in the territory that I had, so.
Question eighteen. Other than what you've already been asked about, please describe additional priorities you might see for the city of Now Then. Additional priorities.
Well, I, I think some additional priorities would be, well, I want to start with, I got a, a few that I think that might be, she has a, looking to do the, at some point we're going to have to get the internet wrapped up and in the city and making sure that the businesses and residents and all that have a, have higher speed air than they've been doing. I think one of the other priorities that's going to be, as exciting as it was to see you all swearing in all these firemen at a council meeting, before we know it, that, that contract's going to be coming due again in twenty twenty-three. And, and I think we need to, as a council, decide kind of where, where you want to go from there. Also see that you spend about, about, you budgeted about four hundred thousand dollars for police coverage. And it looks like a little over budget there from what I've seen. And, but, but what would be, you know, one of the things that I would think we'd want to talk about, what does it look like in the future possibly for fire department, or excuse me, for the police department? You know, as far as anything internal or are you continually comfortable with kind of dealing with that? I think if we get it back about the county coming through and possibly doing roadwork in here, I think dealing with the, the businesses and how it's going to potentially affect the businesses by putting in additional roadways and turning lanes and all that kind of stuff. I think one of the other things I think one of the other things that a new city administrator maybe really want to take a look at initially would be, are we staffed correctly in the city offices? I'm sure we're prepared for elections coming up very quickly. So I don't think there's any shortage of big ticket items that the city's got on its radar right now. You guys, you have a lot going on with everything that's happened and bringing in new staff and Mr. Boyle's being here, and a lot going on. But I'm the right person for the job. I'm up for the challenge. I know exactly what I'd be getting into, and I think you guys would be pleasantly surprised on what I could bring to the table and what I'd be able to accomplish in this role, so.
Thanks for that, too.
Frank isn't getting a whole lot of vote time this summer, that's all I got to say.
We all know that.
I remember meetings ago when you guys had it, you were talking about that.
Poor Frank.
That concludes the questions unless you have follow-up.
No, so you've got eight minutes, and if you have questions for us. And if council has any other follow-up questions, obviously, too.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ray.
I would just, you had mentioned the Heritage Festival, and I would just say, in my 15 years of the festival, I don't remember every pancake flipper, so thank you for being a part of that. Appreciate it.
You don't remember?
I don't remember every pancake flipper that, in the last 15 years, so I didn't remember. I saw it on your thing, and I was trying to figure out what you had done, so.
Mary, you need to get that straight in your head if you're.
I, you know, I wish I could.
You need to remember every pancake flipper.
I didn't think about for that. He got us involved in it, and then obviously moved on to bigger and better things, but we've stayed, continued to be doing it. We're really glad, so. My kids are getting involved in there, and so, but thanks for saying hello.
All right, questions for us?
I do have a couple of questions. Some of my, some of my kind of alluded to here, but, from the city council's perspective, what is the most critical aspect of the city administrator role, and what would you expect out of the city administrator with first 30, 90, maybe even up to a year? What would the city council like to see this next city administrator be able to accomplish in short order?
That's a challenge, because as a council, obviously, we have job description, and there are certain expectations in that. I think we've learned a lot as we've had Frank here, you know, what we can expect and what the challenges are. I think you indicated a number of those in what you saw as additional priorities. Internet is extremely important out here. You mentioned a number of things in your additional things. I guess, from my standpoint, and council's free to add their comments, to not get buried in the minutia. There's a lot of details. There's a lot of things that have to go on. I think your comment about staffing, you know, are we staffed right in the office and in public works? That's gonna be a key thing, because a person can get so busy in the day-to-day, and this is a job that we expect the administrator, it's not a traditional administrative position. This is a working position. It's a small staff, and so the administrator may be working on building permits, or burning permits, or writing up receipts for things to the recycling center, answering residents and business owners' questions. So it's something where this person has to be a jack-of-all-trades, but not get buried in the minutia while doing that. So I think the, seeing the big picture and making sure that we have the right answers, and that that person comes to the council and saying, here's what I see, here's what I believe we need, what's the council vision on that. Other people?
Well, the agenda is big. Getting the agenda all set up and ready, and it pretty much, that was a big curve for Frank to, because he hadn't had to do that in his other position.
Getting everything prepared for the city council meeting weekend, all the packets out there.
That's the packet for Tuesday right there. And that's small compared to last month.
I feel like that's a little excessive, but we all have our own opinions on it.
Anybody else want to come up?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ray.
I'm sorry, was Jason starting?
No, go ahead.
Oh, all right. I would just add communication between us and the staff. And I would concur with the mayor as far as staffing structure, both administratively and public works. Things have changed in how we do our functions, whether it's technology, newly updated equipment in the field. How does that impact what we do, how we do it, how long it takes us to do it, and are we structured correctly for those things?
Anything, Phil?
Yeah, so Scott, one of the things that Frank's been doing since he's been here is been emailing us, the council members, quite frequently, which I think we all appreciate.
Yeah.
Before this, there was, just gonna call the elephant in the room, when our prior staff left, they felt like there was too much requests for information, and there was too many emails. You had said something here in question number two, where you had said something about, you know, getting together weekly with your staff and even doing weekly updates. This council would really appreciate more information than less.
Okay.
So I just want that to be on the table, is the amount of information that goes through your office is gargantuan, and some of the council really likes that amount of information. I'm more of a big-picture guy. I don't need that much, but I appreciate the shotgun method of Frank Boyle's of sending out so many emails, so those who do need that amount of information are informed. So when they're, when that information comes pertinent, they're able to make the answer to that question to that certain citizen who came up and said, how come, you know, Road X is being worked on right now? We have the information, and we can actually answer that instead of having to go into city. I'm just trying to say, that communication between you and the council is gonna be a big fat wire, and you keep that data running back and forth, you'll be great.
Excellent. Consider it done.
Any other questions?
Oh.
You've got about five minutes.
Okay, okay. Kind of along the same lines, and I'll just be quick here. How do you feel the city administration, you know, the city staff, and the city councils perceived by the community here? I mean, I think Phil said something about the elephant in the room, and I know some of the background and all that kind of stuff, but how's the city feeling? Does it feel like there's healing that's been going on? Is there still people that are upset? Are people, what's kind of the, what's kind of the current or kind of the feeling that's going on right now?
So Scott, when I first ran, four years ago, as a country boy farmer, lived in this community forever, I didn't realize there was two halves to the city till I ran. As soon as I threw my hat in the ring, all of a sudden, the waves parted. There was this side, and there was this side. I thought local politics wasn't divided, but it is here in Now Then. So part of that, those former staff leaving, is part of that, my opinion of the two sides. They were there before I came. They'll be there after I leave. There's, it goes back years and years and years, why people have chosen the side, this side or that side. Don't know. I don't believe that the Star Tribune and the Star News publishing on the front page, you know, what had happened was a good idea, but I do know those stories were hand-delivered. After all the dust settled, and the judges made their ruling in the favor of the city, we put in the newsletter, here's the facts, here's what happened. The city is exonerated, and we moved on. So hopefully, our residents were able to read that little blurb, not front-page splash glamour, just a little blurb that says, here's where we came, here's where we are. So now we are, in July, finally doing our interviewing, but that is the fallout of former employees ending their employment here. It's taken six to seven months to recover from that. I am grateful for Pat. Now we're almost to the point where we can choose someone to take over for Frank. Frank's done a great job. How does the city feel about that? That's a good question, but like I said...
All right. Fair enough. That answers my question. And thank you for tackling that one. I appreciate you. I think I already got to ask that one. I think that's all I have. Couple of other questions I had, we kind of tied into them, so we kind of got to them, so. So I just want to thank you all for the opportunity. This has been good to learn more about all of you and the process. I'd like to think that my skills and background and some of the things that I've learned over the past 28 years and where I've been, and also through the police department and dealing with other municipalities and all that kind of stuff, would be of value to the city. I'm a working bear person that's looking for a challenge to be able to come in and try to help where I can. And I think a lot of the things that we're talking about here in the city, and that you've been working on and will continue to work on, is really things that I excel in, and I think I would be a good candidate for you guys to consider as far as moving forward with. You wouldn't be disappointed. I'll leave it at that. I don't want to come off as, but I've been doing a lot of research and a lot of looking into everything that's going on, and you're watching council meetings here and the surrounding city, so I know what's going on in the surrounding cities and all that kind of stuff. I've done my homework, and I'm ready for the challenge if you still see fit, so with that all, and...
One last question. If we were to choose you, what is your availability? How, what's your transition time look like?
My transition time is very minimal. If you guys call me and tell me that I'm the selected candidate, I will move mountains and make sure that I'm here. Come here next week. I could get started around, I got a few things, but that's more important than this, though.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you for coming in.
Can you stop?
For the meeting, Phil, thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Lock recycle. That's what I'm doing.
Have a good evening, Scott. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Check out the barbecue. So Linda, you got any plans for Africa?
Yes, we're going, for sure, in January and maybe also in November. We've had a couple different things going, yeah. January, we have Dennis's niece, then her husband, live in Boston, and they may take over the work for us if we, when we, you know, it won't be too much longer, but we're doing anything. Dennis is a sad, I'm bright, it's a tough 23-hour flight. And when we get there, it's uncomfortable the whole time, but he's happy when he's there. He never wants to leave, so.
Did you ever get hold of Bob Goff?
Yeah, how do I know that name?
The guy who's the ambassador? He's the ambassador.
Yes, yes. I contacted something with him.
You were gonna call him.
Yeah, I tried to call him. Did I talk to him, or did he, what happened? Yes, I did follow through on that, but I don't remember what happened.
I'd give him a call again.
I'm concerned about you. It's some 16-year-old.
He actually flies, what's the country?
Well, we're in Uganda.
Because he's an ambassador of some sort, so he said, his home is actually Ugandan territory. He's starting up schools, he's worked with traffic.
Well, I should get the number again. I don't think I put it in my phone. Maybe I did. Let me double check. I do believe I tried to call him.
A Chinese restaurant, at least. I can't think of the name of it, but that burned down.
So there's a cute little chocolate.
He actually puts his number in his.
That's what you said, yeah.
Chocolate is just expensive.
It's bar, though, right?
But it's, it was lovely. So we went in there and filled it.
Yeah, I'd like to know. I don't have to lose. It's really pretty.
There was, I think it was Lester Park or something like this. I can't remember.
What's the spell of that?
There were a couple of stops.
Cold F rocks.
Oh, that's all, huh?
They come down, it's a 15-foot waterfall, and it makes a pool. You can climb up the rocks on the side, and then jump off. So this is one of their favorite spots. So they're all jumping off like 10, 12.
Yeah, you'll find him very creative, very energetic, very, very moved Ugandan people. Very talented. He's a lawyer. He leads clients. At times, they're alive in the business.
Well, because they weren't shaking, they were confident in what they're doing.
I did it all wrong, and I think I was taken for $200.
He would be a good one to talk to.
At least you experienced it.
At least you got the experience, which makes you a little sad.
We used to, when I worked at the fire company, had a supervisor. One of our drivers would go up to, but took the lead on the daily basis with the semi.
I think every time I read, the sheriff would put in the, people would take him for these $3,000 gift cards.
It's just, it's unbelievable. This is my wife and I, and you're like, oh, Clunka Pachy, and I love. And I said, oh, and she said, and so we did that for about 10 years, because he always went away for Christmas and New Year's, and so we'd go up and somebody would, and we'd look up on the hill, and so.
Bogum!
There were just beautiful lights and stuff.
Wow. He just powder his, so it's perfect.
That's okay.
Better now than in the middle of the interview, right?
That's right.
See the legs start to jiggle?
Do stuff like in internet, do you? I saw a lot of that. This is like, this is like, yes, go.
You're really gonna say no?
I know. I don't know, you know. You don't have to give it or talk about it. I'm sure you were grassing with a great woman, so every time I asked you, we'd say, no, I'm good, I'm good. Time I realized, Sam, it's a plan.
She was about to yell.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So I'm excited, but I realized that, and I told you.
See, they probably don't have a dog, so do it in the winter, I suppose.
I mean, you're on today.
Gotta walk it down, see it, wait a minute, and so they're still here, right? So then we found a house here, they had the kayaks and everything, and we just humped in there.
Let's get you shut the door.
It's just so fabulous.
See, I kayak and it's really nice, it's like a sailboat. I want to be a yacht, I just don't...
You can observe them, we like to promote them, and you can observe them.
Yeah, we kind of did that on an island or something somewhere. And it was just, it was, I'll see it from far away, and I liked having him big around me.
Hi.
Hi. Nice to meet you today, Mary.
Joel. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Hi Jason, I'm under way.
Jason, welcome, Jason. Jason, well, I'll be for...
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
It's our work day. We try to be as relaxed as we can here. We give you a full hour. Pat keeps time, so if we're ahead of schedule or behind schedule, one of us will let you know about the halfway point where we sit. Where you have Frank, who will be asking all the questions, so that we can take our notes. We want you to be as relaxed as you can. For the record, it's Zima, right?
Zima, yeah.
So Jason Zima is our candidate at this point. And take as long as you feel it's necessary to give a complete answer. Certainly if you need clarification or want the answer, some of our answers have multiple parts to them, so if you want a clarification, feel free to ask that too, but take your time. We have eighteen questions. And then the final question is yours to ask whatever you want of us. We've been stumped a couple of times, so...
I try not to ask anything difficult, I'm sorry.
So, with that, we'll start the questioning. Jason, we'll start with a two-parter.
Okay.
Alright. Please tell us what interests you about the now-then administrator position? Second part, highlight the key qualities that make you the best person to assume this job.
No, I was asking this right question, I don't like to see you call me. It was the first question that I got asked, so... You know, I think one of the things that piqued my interest about it is, you know, when I was in Maple Plain, I was the first ever city administrator there. Walked into an organization in the community that had been going through some struggles at the time. And I think the opportunity there to come in and really kind of work with the city council to help shape, one, some of the things that they wanted to accomplish and some of the things that they were looking at and kind of what this vision that they had for the community ultimately wanted to be. And I was there for six and a half years and I loved it. And opportunity came, you sort of move on, and I took that. And I've had a few council members that have contacted me since and asked me if I'm interested in coming back. And I think one of the things that when I looked at this position is, there's a lot of similarities to that. My time in Maple Plain, having, one, sort of becoming the first administrator in the role. But not so much that as it is sort of coming in and really kind of helping the council, helping the community. You know, you read through the comprehensive plan, you've got a lot of goals, things that you want to accomplish. You know, whether it's financial or it's development, you know, transportation issues, what have you, the city center component, those sorts of things. Kind of excites me to be able to come in and sort of help you all kind of start the process of creating that long-term legacy for what Nowland is today and what it can be over the long-term future. And having a lot of different experiences, having been in that role, being the person that has to kind of do it all. I feel like I bring a lot of wealth and knowledge, a lot of value to that position of having been a person that has to help, you know, the council plan for the future financially, but also having to be the first, then when somebody comes into the city, oh, I might have to help, you know, with the building committee or whatnot. So that ability to sort of have that connection really close to the community, that's one of the things that I feel sort of is... One of the reasons why I chose this sort of career path was the passion I have for local government and the community. Really helping communities sort of build this identity that they want to have long-term and help them through the tough decisions and, you know, being there with them sort of in the trenches as they're making those decisions going forward. So, you know, one of the qualities that I feel that I burn is that passion for local government, you know, the desire to sort of help the community grow, wherever that growth plan is or whatever it looks like. Achieve the different things that you want to achieve over time. And really doing a lot of that, you'll get to know me, I'm a person that looks, you know, tries to look ahead to the future. What's, I can, we're working on this year for the budget, but we have to keep an eye on for the next five years. And what does that look like and how do we get there and what are the steps? And what does it cost to get there? And really try and engage the community from that standpoint, to know that you are doing what you can on their behalf to make those decisions and frankly, really make it easier for the next council members that come after you and for the next staff that come after you as well. So I think, you know, some of those highlights, I really feel is, one, having been in the role, being the first ever administrator, understand some of the challenges that come with it, some of the needs that come with it. You know, that passion I have for the local government. And I think there's just a lot of things that really kind of excite me about the position. And I think there's a good symbiotic relationship between my experiences that I've had, not just from Maple Plain, but I've learned from other communities and how that sort of fits into this role at your local conference.
Question two. Please describe your supervisory and management style and how those two facilitate teamwork among the council, the staff, and contracted employees.
So, I believe in sort of a, I prefer to kind of use the leadership aspect, so I prefer sort of a shared leadership approach when it comes to management. But I get that at the end of the day, that it's up to the city administrator to make a decision or to bring a recommendation to the council. But I don't feel that I can do that without having that real tight, close-knit involvement with the other staff. I know a lot of things about public works, but the staff that you have here know more about Nowland and some of the different things that you have to deal with, so their input is critical. I know my short time over at City Hall, that you've got staff that haven't been, that are new to sort of city government or local government and are experiencing a lot of things through their brain. And I think that's a tremendous opportunity that they have and different insights that they bring. So how can we tap into those experiences that they have? And couple that with the experiences and experience that I've had and the knowledge that I bring from that aspect. So I think, and even working with consultants, you know, you have a planning consultant. I was in Rogers and I was the planner there, the community development person there. Been around planning my whole, doesn't matter what city I've been in, I've been around planning and economic development things. And so, the ability to sort of help understand and to work with the city council to help understand what your goals are and then to be able to turn around and help facilitate that with staff. And to work with them to sort of get the best sort of reaction from them, the best recommendations that when they come back, you're not just getting something that I've spent time looking at, you're sort of getting something that has been sort of discussed and has been researched and you kind of get a feel from all the staff that, you know, if we're talking about a financial situation that I've spent time talking with the staff in the office, about here's some of the challenges and things like that, what do you know? Because if you, if council wants something and I go back to the staff and say, "Well, that's not gonna work," I need to come back and say, "Well, the staff says it's not gonna work for these particular reasons, so we need to take a different approach."
Question three. Please share examples of staff and coworkers that you have supervised or influenced that advanced within the organization that you were working for or somewhere else. What role did you play in assisting them to be successful?
So I've had interns that have gone on to become city planners in organizations. I've had interns that have gone on to become city administrators in other organizations. I've had staff, when I was in North St. Paul, I was a big promoter of, you know, we want to be able, at some point, we want to be able to promote from within, so we have to build the capacity within the staff. So they need to go to things like leadership school or supervisory training or some of those other things. So if the opportunity comes, they at least are a consideration for the organization to enable them to move up. So we want to have that career ladder internally as opposed to always having to hire from the outside because of the different types of experiences that we have. So I, today, I can say that I know one of the firefighters when I was there was the assistant and today is the fire chief for the organization there. And I think it was, I look at it and say, it was some of my pushing him to go to the Public Safety Academy through Hamon University to get some of those experiences from that aspect. I had tremendous mentors, starting out in the organization, and I've always looked at that of doing the same thing. From my perspective is, whenever I have interns, is to give them that opportunity to... I was never told, "This is how you're going to do it and this is the way it should be done." It was always, "This is the assignment, this is what we're trying to work on, so we need you to go and do the research and bring back that feedback." When I was in Rogers, I had an intern there that... We had a person that left the organization and we were hiring and we really liked him and wanted to keep him on. He's like, "Well, I wanna, I wanna go work in Minneapolis." And I said, "Well, if you go work in Minneapolis, you're gonna be the pool guy or the deck guy. You're not gonna get to do all these different planning functions." And I said, "You know, you've done a really good work, the council really likes you, the staff, you know, you do a really good job working with the community. And I think if you stick it out here for a little bit longer, you can always go back to Minneapolis. But we're gonna give you this whole world experience of different, doing different things and, you know, working on staff reports and meeting with the residents. You're gonna work on development, you're gonna work on decks and fences and things like that." He actually, he actually was in the process of moving to California and he sent me sort of a thank you note. And he kind of talked about the things that I never, ever put him in a position where he had to come to me and I was gonna tell him how to do it, it was always, "Go figure it out, if you have issues, come back to me, we'll talk about it and I'll give you some insights." And he always said that the one thing he appreciated was the fact that I was always patient with him. I was always willing to provide him some information and I always included him on different discussions. So if we were meeting with the developer, he was in that discussion. We were meeting with different people, he was always part of those conversations. Because I told him, planning isn't planning, it's how it affects the whole community and different things that you're working on. So the ability of understanding and experiencing those different things is critical. So, you know, when I'm trying to develop staff or, you know, build capacity within organizations, making sure that people are involved, and they're doing it, not just being told how to do it, so...
Question four. Please describe a team that you recently led and the task. What did or did not make the team successful?
Excuse me. So the last project I worked on in Rogers was, we, and within our comprehensive plan, downtown is identified as a huge priority. The council talked about it for fifteen or twenty years and never really had any particular momentum. We rewrote the comprehensive plan for 2040 and it clearly identified what the goals and outcomes were desired for the downtown area. We updated the master plan, we did a lot of different things. We did a street skate plan, just to kind of get an idea of how we feel. But the last thing that we really needed was sort of a small area plan, is what it's called, which adds definition to what it could look like in the future. And so we, you know, it was myself and my associate planner, they brought on a consulting firm to sort of help us sort of put the plan together. And we had a very robust sort of community engagement aspect. We met individually with business owners, we met individually with property owners. And we, we had touch points within the community where we had community cafe conversations where the residents and the business owners, especially specifically to the downtown area could come in and rotate between tables and we had different topics and we talked about different things. We did a brief community survey to get feedback from different people to understand how they use downtown, those different things. So we employed a lot of different tactics. So it was a, I think it was like a six to nine-month sort of process from the beginning to end. And it was intended to be that way, so we were, as we are going along through the development of that plan, it was different touch points. Are we on point? Well, we got to a point where we had a draft plan, we met specifically with different property owners or business owners in downtown. Is this, when you've been at these meetings, is this what you've heard? Are these some of the comments that you've shared? Because we didn't want to have a plan at the end that sort of struggled. Interestingly enough, we get through the whole process, we get to the very end, where we're recommending to the planning commission and council. One of the property owners came forward and said, "Well, we're not interested in this." After they had been engaged and involved in the conversation the whole entire time. They've chosen for some reason not to provide and not share your concerns with the city. So it slammed the project to sort of a screeching halt at that point. Because, you know, council, rightfully so, was like, "Well, we need to have a conversation about what's going on." And, you know, I said, "Here's all my notes and here's my minutes and here's all the things that we've had, these discussions. We've been to that business or that property owner's place multiple times and we've had conversations with the different staff. And with every meeting, there's been no, like, we're against this. There's been concern, but none of those concerns have been laid out in terms of what's being presented to this day." And yes, we want to be, we want to recognize what how they want to use their property in the future and we can adjust the planning coordinate to accommodate that. But we also have to find for what the best long-term interest of the downtown area is going to ultimately look like. So, I left there and then with the process of sort of restarting some of those conversations with them at that point. But that one was tough because when you've been to their place multiple times and you've had multiple conversations and they've been at the different meetings to kind of get a different reaction was a little bit disappointing on our part. And that was something I did share with the property owner that it would have been helpful if he would have said to this four months ago as opposed to the night that it's quite the council.
Did he have a reason why not?
No, the reason was, well, they were advised not to say anything. What's that?
By whom?
By their legal counsel. So, that made it difficult.
Alright. Question five. Some councils are more involved in day-to-day affairs. How would you manage this to the city's best interests?
Well, I, you know, people run for elected office to serve on the city council because they have the vested interest in the community and they want to see the community ultimately go in a particular direction. You know, whatever the particular issues are, I think the idea that, one, is I would hope the council would appreciate that my management of the city is going to be transparent, it's going to be very forthcoming. If there's any questions or issues that come up from a council perspective, my hope would be that, one, I would always be accessible, you could pick up the phone and call or stop in and we can talk to whatever the issues that you're hearing. You know, I think working through the process, then I understand too that, you know, you've got a job to do as well, that you're making these decisions and you want to be actively engaged in the decisions. And I think my goal is always to make sure that you're, you have as much information at your disposal when you're making the decision, so if we get, before our council meeting, all of a sudden we get new information, is to make sure you get that level of information. So, you know, my hope is to, you know, really manage the city from a day-to-day basis where the council has the level of trust that the things are being addressed and taken care of and that when it's time to make decisions, you're making those decisions so that it's providing guidance to myself and staff in terms of what direction ultimately going in so that we can run the day-to-day operations accordingly from that perspective. But, you know, certainly, if anybody here would have any, hear from residents in the community or have any questions about something that's coming up or an item that's on the agenda and you want to have some more questions, we're meeting with the mayor ahead of time to go over the agenda just to kind of run through the stuff for that evening, just to make sure that everybody has the same type of information. And if there's any questions that we're working through and trying to compile information that we can so that then everybody has the same level of detail.
Could you give me an example, this is off script, I'm afraid, of an instance where you knew the council was going to be concerned about something? You found out about it, how did you make sure the council was aware of it?
We had, in Rogers, we had a development going through the process and we had a lot of different information that was coming in. And so, there's a lot of information being posted on Facebook, community Facebook account. We received a lot of different sort of input that had been coming in that was also going to the city council. And so, as we were getting at it, and so we'd already been through the planning commission review process and the public hearing had been taking place, but, you know, we had some residents that lived next to the development that weren't necessarily happy with it. And so there was a lot of misinformation that was being posted and coming in. So we sort of compiled all that sort of stuff and put together sort of an email to be able to put out to council and then working with the administrator, I contact, we kind of split it up a little bit. He contacted a few council members, I contacted a few other. And he said, "FYI, there's an email that's coming out to you to explain a lot of the different things that are being posted on social media, emails that are coming out that if you haven't seen it yet are in your inbox to help the development. And we just want to be very clear as it relates to the information that's being put out, that we want to sort of reset that. If you have any questions or issues, let us know so we can be prepared to address those in advance of the meeting." We can certainly go over some of these different things. But a lot of these things were addressed during the public hearing. But we also want to be sure that the council's comfortable with the information and that you're understanding the development and those sorts of things, so...
Thank you. Question six. How have your work actions benefit, bent, benefited previous employers?
Well, you know, I'll say, you know, when I left Maple Plain, one of the council members said to me, on one of my last days there, he said, "You know, when you came here six, whatever, six and a half years ago, you know, we were kind of struggling. And today, you know, we are on a financial path. We know where we're going, we know what we're gonna be doing, we know the cost of things, we have a timeline for projects, and we have a bond rating." They went from no bond rating to a double A, which is significant for a city of that size. You know, when I was in North St. Paul, again... Paul, again, we, we, we went from a single A bond rating to a double A bond rating. Um, one of the things I really do enjoy is, is the financial aspect of the role, not so much just that, but the aspect of the, the long range for strategic planning, sort of having a plan of what the future looks like and how everything goes together. Um, when we sit down to work on a budget, start working on the budget process, my hope is that we'll have some semblance of a, kind of a guiding plan or a strategic plan in place. And then we'll talk about, okay, these are some of the things we're trying to accomplish. Um, what are the goals for this next year, next couple of years? So we kind of can put that in place. And so as we're working on the budget, the council says, these are our five top goals for the year or what have you. Staff can come back and say, okay, in order for us to accomplish these things, this is the cost associated with doing that. And this is the potential impact of the levy. So at least it puts you in the position of understanding, um, you know, what your goals are, what are costs and what it's going to take to get those things done. And can we get it done in a year or is that the starting point for that? Um, what I've found, what I've experienced from other council members is where we've done that activity, um, is, and, and engaged that is that it's been a lot easier for them. It's taken a lot of the stress or pressure off. When residents come and came to them before, it was like, oh, we improved a three percent increase in the levy or six percent or whatever the number was. But they could say, well, here's why we did that. And this is what we're trying to accomplish and this is the basis for the decision. Um, my mayor in North St. Paul was skeptical of going through the whole strategic planning process and didn't understand how that correlated to the budget. Um, but we went through that whole process and put the first budget together and we were going through the budget process and the council was like, well, that's too much. We've got to take it out. And we get to that right before adopting a preliminary levy, they said, what about these things? And we took it out a month ago. Oh, you have to put it back in. Um, and what he found was that because when he got asked, well, why is the levy going up so much? Well, this is what we're doing. And he could actually show them what it was. He walked into my office the next day and said, I'm on board. I could easily explain to the residents the how and the why and the cost associated with doing the things, one, that they expected us to do and two, that, um, we wanted to do because we felt it was important on behalf of the community.
Question seven. Describe a controversial situation that you were part of, which involved public scrutiny and the media's attention. How did you handle the situation? What was the outcome?
Yeah, Sergeant Mayor, I just see Jason that you've got the red light on the mic there. Would you mind?
Hit the bottom button.
Just the bottom, see if it goes green. Thank you.
Great. I got to start over now. Is that what you're saying?
Give me a word.
I've been coaching thirteen-year-olds, so my voice kind of wavers a little bit, but...
I'll give you the question again.
I, 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 I got it. Yeah, yeah. Um... It's almost kind of comical to look back at, even though it was kind of serious at the time. Um, so I was, North St. Paul, I'd been there for about a year. I don't even think I'd have even been there a year yet. We had a topic at a workshop that came up that was about our, our liquor ordinance. And liquor ordinance?
Okay.
Um, it had been something that had been put in place a few years prior and some of the, the bars in the community, there were, down Main Street, it was a very big presence, the bars, some of the bars had been there established a long time. And they always kind of felt it was kind of the city, um, or at least a few people in the city kind of coming after them for things that they felt they didn't do. So it became a very heated debate at this meeting to the point that a mayor, the mayor, uh, mayor and a council member kind of went toe-to-toe. And I've been in situ, you know, in meetings before where it gets a little heated and people are arguing back and forth. It's legitimately the first time I've ever seen two individuals get up and walk out of the room threatening that they were going to beat each other up. And they walked out the door, down the stairs, and myself and the city attorney went behind them and eventually just kind of got between them and said, enough is enough. Let's go back up. We understand that there's an issue here. Um, we need to give everybody opportunity to speak. And it was something that was kind of near and dear to both hearts. I think some of it honestly was the mayor felt threatened because the council member kind of took over the meeting at that point and wasn't allowing him to speak, that sort of stuff. Um, whatever it was, um, that it's probably the first time and only time I've ever done this. And I don't know if I would ever, ever do it again, but I found myself in a position, um, where I asked the city attorney to stick around afterwards. The workshop ended and I asked the city attorney and the mayor and one council member to, to stay. Everybody got up and we shut the doors and I said, you know, I'm probably not the person to say this because you're not my employees. I work for you, but this is completely unbecoming conduct of the council. Um, you had business owners in here, one that had a daughter, and you're swearing at each other and you're threatening to kick each other's butt and you get up and you walk out of the room. I don't, I, whatever the disagreements are, the disagreements, um, you, at, at some point you have to be able to agree to disagree on things, but this be, type of behavior can't happen again. Um, the, the one council member threatened litigation. We ended, ended up doing sort of an internal investigation. He went, he posted all this stuff on his Facebook account and it went, hit Fox nine and it was in the newspaper. So all I dealt with for a week was that. Um, it was a very stressful moment because I had council members coming to me asking me, what are you going to do about this? And I said, nothing. I can't do anything about it. This is up to you guys to figure out what this is going to look like. I can help facilitate a process. We can bring in people to help talk about this type of thing, but I'm not, I'm accountable to you and not the other way around. So I ask you, what do we need to do about this? Um, you know, it, it, eventually we, the council agreed to have a facilitator come in and talk about how you mediate when you're having difficulties and how everybody gets an opportunity to speak. And so it was, it's a good mediated session, but the one council member opted not to participate and ultimately resigned. Um, threatened to resign if the mayor didn't resign. And the mayor said, no one had this apology at the next meeting. And then he ended up just resigning and walking out. And that was kind of the end of that. Um, it, it was, I, I, it was a significant amount of stress for a week. And I think I was always asking myself, like, how do I help facilitate this? Multiple conversations with the city, city attorney, we did. We had initially our police department sort of looked into the situation. Uh, we had an outside, we, at the request of the one council member, we did, had an outside firm, we assigned it to an outside agency. They did an investigation just to look at the information, just to make sure we weren't missing anything. Um, at the end of the day, I think the, the expectation was the charges were going to be presented, but there really wasn't anything to charge. Other, you know, just people were, um, not necessarily controlling their emotions in that situation. So it was unfortunate. Um, it's a situation I hope I never have to be in again, but, you know, I think, I think at that time, I think the one thing that a few council members said was the fact that I was trying to help just keep things calm and focused on, like, what are the next steps? How are we going to sort of move forward on this? And as opposed to kind of getting into the, um, you know, the weeds of the how and the why and what happened as opposed to, you know, what's the resolution that we're going to have and the outcome beyond this? So...
Question eight. Describe how you believe the relationship between the city administrator and city council should function.
Yeah. So I, I believe that, you know, we are a team, um, that we're a team of six, even though I'm, I work at the council's, uh, request and, um, but I believe that, you know, we need to sort of take these symbiotic, these steps together, that I have an understanding of what you want to accomplish. You have an understanding of maybe what I want to accomplish from an administrator perspective on behalf of the organization itself and how that attributes to the decisions you make and how it attributes to the organization, uh, itself, uh, and of the community itself. Um, you know, I've always tried to look at it from the aspect of that we're all in this together and we're all working in the best interest of the community together. And that's kind of the way that it has to be. Um, and you're always going to get my best foot forward as, as much as I'm expecting that I'm going to get yours. Um, and if there's any issues that come up or misunderstandings, that we're having a discussion ultimately what that is so that we can clear the air on whatever the particular topic or issue might be. Um, I try to be very open and transparent, um, with regards to things. Um, you know, that's one of my philosophies is, you know, especially being in this role, is to make sure that you have all the information that you need, that you're making your decisions so that when you're confronted by people in the community asking you questions, you can say, well, here's the information. This is what I know and understand. Um, so I really do believe that our relationship should be strong and that's something that I work towards.
So Jason, we're at twenty-eight minutes and, uh, again, you've got eighteen questions.
I will show you.
Do you have a little time for you to ask the council?
Question eight. Please describe your involvement in budgeting and financial processes of your organization as well as your experience in a long-term plan.
So I touched on this a little bit earlier. Um, I believe in street, strategic planning, long-range planning. I've done it in every organization that I've been in. Um, when I was in North St. Paul, I had a finance director. I do believe in having finance staff to sort of help because it's a, it's a big task that has to be achieved. Um, but at the same time, I do enjoy that aspect of it, um, because I think that it's a very critical aspect and function of a city administrator is to really understand how the finances relate to the council's goals and directions and vice versa. So I've done capital improvement planning, long-range planning, facility planning, uh, equipment, uh, planning. Uh, when I was in North St. Paul, we completely updated and revamped the whole equipment replacement fund, uh, to the point that we were trying to set money aside so we were paying for equipment out of cash, as an example, as opposed to equipment certificates, which I don't necessarily like. Um, but so my goal is to try and look at things long-term and, um, how all the different things fit together. So if we're looking at a, a capital improvement project, um, in three years from now, we're sort of starting to plan today, like how that might be paid for. So we have an idea. So if we're trying to set money aside to reduce the amount of debt that we're going to issue, we're planning for that now. Um, if there's assessments involved, we understand what those ultimately look like. So I've also written assessment policy and things like that. So, um, I feel that I have a very sound financial management background aspect. Uh, it's one area that I really do enjoy working on, so...
And follow-up there. So the, um, what level of finances, you, you mentioned in North St. Paul, you did the equipment replacement fund, you've done some CIP. What specifically have you been responsible for, um, dollar-wise and, and, and part of a team? You had a finance director in North St. Paul.
Right.
In those six years you were in Maple Plain, how much of the budgetary and, and long-range, short, short-range?
Well, in Maple Plain, I, I did it all.
So what was that, what was that like?
What was it like?
Yeah. I mean, what, what were you responsible for? What was there, how big were they?
Dollar-wise?
Oh, dollar-wise?
Their budget.
Uh... Maple Plain's budget was probably about what yours currently is. Um, debt-wise, I don't remember. I know all-encompassing, when I was in North St. Paul, was twenty-five some million dollars total, which included debt, equipment replacement, you know, electric fund, general fund, utility funds, all those sorts of things. So it was a pretty broad aspect of dealing all that. Um, you know, e- even though I had a finance director there, I mean, I, you know, a lot of that stuff still ran through me from that aspect because, um, it was an area of interest of mine to sort of keep tabs on. And I felt I was in a better position of being more actively involved in that sort of stuff, especially because we were talking about a lot of really big things that the council wanted to get done. And so me, that was always a topic of conversation. So I always had that sort of stuff under my umbrella, if that makes sense. Did, did that answer your question?
Mm-hmm.
Can I have a follow-up too? Have you done the franchising agreements, like with utilities or?
Yes.
Okay.
Question seven. What have you previously done to educate new members about finances and keep members apprised of changes in the budget?
So I'll use this as an example. So when I was in North St. Paul, we started a citizens academy, which was not just police citizens academy, but we talked about everything that the city did. So we had a dyna, a, a aspect of that, a session of that, that included how the budget is and how it works and how tax levy and how, what tax rates are and all those sorts of things. Um, and so when I have ever had new council members come on, I try to sit down with, one, uh, in other cities, I've had, you know, like new council member packets of information. Um, but then I've also tried to sit down with them to understand what not, level of knowledge they have in terms of finances from a public perspective so that I can sit down and sort of walk them through, this is what it looks like. I also have, I think sometimes it's also good if you get new council members on to, um, kind of restart the conversation and have more of a full council conversation and sort of start back over and kind of walk through some of the different things so everybody's getting reacquainted or reeducated because you guys get a lot of stuff thrown at you all the time. And sometimes it's hard to remember how everything works together. Um, so the ability to just sort of, one, have those individual discussions and two, have those larger group discussions to help facilitate those sorts of things. Um, what was the last part of the question?
Last part is, uh, how did you communicate changes in the budget?
Yeah. So, uh, everywhere, in the two previous cities where I've been the administrator in, we always had quarterly budget updates. And so we gave, here's what the budget looks like here, how, here's all this compares to where we're at from a revenue generation perspective. Here's what it compares in terms of what our projected budget is for the year. And then I always kind of gave a rough projection of, here's what it looks like, um, through the end of the year. I would say we probably, I take it, but we probably didn't do it quarterly because in the first quarter, it's kind of hard to get a fa, really figure where you're going to land. Um, but we try to at least keep the council abreast in terms of, here's where we're at, here's where we're heading. These are some of the things that are ahead of us. If there's something that we didn't plan for that's in the budget and it's something that's coming up, I try to bring that to a council meeting so we're talking about it and saying, this is something that wasn't planned, but this is a new thing that we need to address or figure out, or it's a new expense that wasn't in there. And so then it's, might be, in order to, for us to accommodate that, we need to sort of adjust from here and move the funding over here or move the budget allocation from one spot to the other to accommodate that. Or it's going to be use of your general reserves to offset that expense and that's just something we'll recognize at the end of the year. So...
Okay.
Question eleven. Describe how you would communicate and build trust with the city council and staff.
Yeah. Well, you know, with city council, I always make myself accessible. Um, I think I mentioned earlier, um, you know, one is on days of council meetings, I like to meet with the mayor, who's the facilitator of the meeting, just to run through the agenda, just to give him a heads up in terms of, here's some of the different things that we are, we're hearing now, um, some of the things to be prepared for in terms of what could come in if we're suspecting that somebody could come in with questions or concerns. Um, would also provide any, any new updates or information to council as well at the same time. Um, my hope is always on, especially whether it's once the packet's out, if the council reviews the packet and you have questions, you have issues or you, you're maybe not clear on something, is to reach out to me so we can set up a time to sort of walk through that sort of stuff. Um, as we're hearing different things in the community, is to try and also make sure the council's abreast on that. Um, try to send out a weekly or bi-weekly, um, uh, sort of update in terms of different things that are going on in the community or different projects that are in place or different, just updates on things that we're working on from a staff perspective. So at least that you are, you know, have a good idea of some of the different things that are out there, some of the different things that are being worked on. From a staff perspective, it's really, as I, as I said when I was over there, my philosophy is active and present. So one of the, when you, when you're one of two, three in the office, it's kind of hard not to be part of the, that team on the inside. But I think the aspect of, whether it's an organization of this size or one larger in North St. Paul, was always that aspect of being engaged to know the staff, to really get to know them, to be part of the team, um, to be known as, Jason, not, this is our city administrator. Um, so I, you know, and with them, it's having those inner, those really good relation, personal relationships, um, you know, allows us to sort of do better work, better communication, that we have, we have the ability to sort of talk back and forth more openly, um, and not so just technical when we're working on stuff. So, you know, I believe in employee engagement, other things like that. So getting together with them, going for lunch and doing things like that, just to make sure that we're continuing to have those type of relationships.
Question twelve. How would you balance the residents' desire to remain a rural community and the developers' desire to develop?
Say that again, the rural community with...
How would you balance the residents' desire to remain a rural community and the developers' desire to develop the community?
Yeah. So it's the million-dollar question.
[laughing]
Um, you know, I, I think, one, you know, I know that, you know, the legislature gave you some approvals to not to be bound to the Met Council's requirements. Um, so I think you've got a unique opportunity in that aspect to, um, you know, be a place that a lot of communities kind of want to be, which is they want to kind of preserve some of that identity that they grew up around, which is that rural aspect. And I think there's something, you know, to marvel in that is that's part of their identity that you have the ability to sort of achieve. You know, I think the challenging part is, is you look over time, as you look at trying to attract business into the community or make it possible for businesses, how does the ability of not having some of those utilities affect that? And are there opportunities to figure out what that looks like? You know, one of the things, as I was reading through the comp plan and, and looking at some of the different aspects, when you talk about the rural community, I think, and I know at the, in the, in there, there's a pair, there's a sentence that says, you know, the idea of this rural residential community at the end of 2040 could change, you know, if utilities are accessible. So I think one of the biggest things to think about is, long-term, is as you're looking at development and rural residential development, how are you going to make it, how can the community... how are you going to make it, how can the community make it possible that the day that utilities come, and there's either a need or an opportunity to extend those utilities, to make sure that your roadway systems, your utility systems can be extended cost-effectively, efficiently, to be able to service the community or certain parts of the community. That's not saying that you have to do that when that time comes. But sometimes as development is occurring, that just the inability to sort of think about, is this development going to create a roadblock to other opportunities that we might have in town? So as an example, you might have a business that comes to the community that's interested in coming here that maybe needs water and sewer. Is that development going to prohibit the ability to get that water and sewer to there without having the developer, the community, have to pay a very high amount of money to get it to that spot? So it's, it's just a thought process of thinking of things, not necessarily that you're going to do those things. And it's the balancing aspect of some of, some of those aspects. Sometimes there's the opportunity of doing development, you know, in Rogers, we tried to be pretty inventive where we had areas that were outside the municipal services district, where we had people that owned tracts of land. And we said, well, let's just subdivide it. If you want to sell it for two and one, or two or three, or five acre lots, but we want to plan the potential of what would happen if utilities come. So that we know that we can achieve a density there, as an example. That was the biggest question. So we know that at some point, if utilities ever come, that we can service your property, which makes your property more valuable from that aspect. So it was working with the landowner to think about what the future could be in that aspect. Not stopping them from doing what they wanted to do today, but at least there was an idea of what the future could be tomorrow. So I think from the development aspect, it's, this is what we're, this is who we are, this is our goal. You know, this is what the direction ultimately that we want to be. And if it's a developer comes in, it's a really good project, maybe there's different opportunities with community septic and some other things that could help that developer achieve some of their goals and still maintain some of the rural residential image that you want to maintain, and open space and protecting natural resources and things like that.
Question thirteen. Tell us about your experience working with police, fire, and emergency responders to create, maintain, and exercise an emergency management plan.
Yes, when I, when I worked at the Department of Natural Resources, I was on the emergency response team. I forget what rating I was at that time, but when I was in Maple Plain, there, when you're the city manager, you're sort of one of the people that are the key aspects. So it's public safety, and then it's, then it's the mayor, and then it's the city administrator as it relates to some of that, that function in terms of how things work. And really, in my, in my expectation of having been in those roles and that sort of stuff, it's, I understand my role is to assist the mayor and the council in terms of making the decisions, really from a financial perspective, if you're encountering an emergency situation that you're, that you're dealing with. But when I was in Maple Plain, our, we had a joint police department, and the fire department was ours, even though it was technically joint. And we did multiple sort of coordinations and training because, I mean, we did that not yearly, but kind of every other year because the fire chief and I felt it was important that the council was abreast in terms of how to best manage, or what happens if we're encountering a situation, a tornado goes through town, or we have other issues, so that they understand what their role and function is as a council or as the mayor and the council from that perspective. So we did some of the same things in, in North St. Paul there. I had a full-time police department, and I had full-time fire staff, and there we had one of them was the sort of the emergency response manager from that aspect. So I, I've had different aspects where some of it's contracted and some of it's been paid on, paid staff, so.
Question fourteen. Describe the steps you would take to network and develop relationships with neighboring city administrators.
So one of the things I do believe in is, is being out there. I think the more that I'm active throughout the community, but also active with different, whether it's management organizations or getting to know my neighboring cities. I do know some of the different administrators within Anoka County cities already, so I already have some pre-established relationships with them already. I, the idea of getting together on a regular basis to sort of just touch in on some of the different things that they have going on is important because they might be doing something that has an effect on what is going on in Now Then, or something we might be aware of. And so even when I was in Rogers as an example, when we had development that was occurring on both borders, I would reach out to the city administrator of the planner over there, saying FYI, we have a development coming through just because we shared a joint road. We just want to have a conversation ahead of time. So it allowed us, actually, they had a development at the same time too. So we talked about what the impacts were to the roadway, and who was going to be responsible for that, and the county didn't want to pay for it, so how is that going to be best addressed? I like the idea too of trying to maintain, you know, good relationships and try to have regular conversations with, whether it's Anoka County administrator or other staff there. Just so that we're also aware of what's going on from a county perspective and how that might relate to or impact what's going on in the city, so.
Question fifteen. Describe your experience in working with other units of government to develop service partnerships.
Yeah, so I mean, we all are in watershed districts, so you already have relationships outside from that aspect of different agencies that you're having to work with. As I said, when, when I was in Maple Plain, our police department was a joint powers agreement between the cities of Independence and Maple Plain. When I was there as well, the fire department, like I said, even though it was our fire department, was kind of a joint powers agreement between us and the city of Independence, and then we contracted services to the city of Medina for a portion of their city. You know, so I think a lot of it's just really understanding, you know, what, what is it that we're looking for, for that JPA or that partnership to sort of assist us with? And what role do we provide to that, and what do we bring to the table from that aspect? And then really sort of building that up from the perspective of, of what that looks long-term and how it works together. When I was in North St. Paul, we had the, I forget what it's called. Public training facility that was a joint powers agreement between about five different cities. And so technically, all the city managers or administrators were sort of the overseer of that, but that got assigned to the fire chiefs. And we were kind of the support mechanism from that standpoint. So in that case, it was who are the people in the best position to manage those contract, those agreements as opposed to the managers, so.
Question sixteen. Describe how you would become involved in the Now Then community.
You know, one of the things that I enjoy the most about, for me, it's not being the city administrator, it's being in the community and the wall. And so one of the things that, that I really enjoy doing is you know, when there's different community events or different community activities, it's, it's opportunities to go participate in those. Whether that means that maybe the city has a booth at an event, and we're trying to share some information or just introduce who we are. As I said, when I was in North St. Paul, we did the citizens academy because there was a need to really sort of just reach out and get the community understanding what was going on. We did public safety nights. We did a lot of different things to really let the people know who we were, that we weren't just City Hall, that we were, you know, there to service the community, and we wanted to talk about a lot of the really good things that we're doing at City Hall, and what the benefits were for the residents and the different decisions that the city council was making. So you know, and the idea of getting to know the business owners too, it's reaching out to them and going to spend some time with them as well. I'm sure everybody here has this business or that business that are important or key businesses that, you know, you would like me to spend some time with to get to know, and, and certainly would do that as well. You know, so I think it's just the idea of really sort of being out there and, and getting to know people, because I think the more connections and relationships I have outside of the walls of the city hall, the more respect I can get, the more people trust, and the more people that, and the more people know that they can reach out to me and contact me, and if they have questions or concerns and those sorts of things. So they know who I am.
Question seventeen. Describe your experience in developing, coaching, and holding employees accountable.
Yes, as I talked a little bit earlier, you know, everybody in City Hall has different functions, and I think it's always great to be able to send, you know, different staff to this, so they can help learn their roles specifically better. But as an example, if you have an accountant that's always going to accounting programs, you're not learning anything else. So the idea of being able to help them give more, more of a well-rounded sort of education, professional experience. So going to different conferences, maybe taking a leadership class on different things that are available. And so whether that's somebody that works in the staff or a public works employee, just giving the ability to go to some of these different things, not just, oh, you have to get your, you know, renew your CDL license. It's the different things that can help them continue to become a better employee. You know, and unfortunately, sometimes, you know, the expectations, you know, maybe aren't being met, and so it's sitting down with employees, and nobody likes to do performance evaluations, and so you know, my goal is always to sort of have routine check-in conversations with staff in terms of, you know, here's what's going on, this is what's next, this is what I need you to do, and and then if something's not being met, is to sit down with them sooner rather than later, so that it's not, you know, I don't believe in the annual employee evaluation, and here's all the things that happened this last year. It's more of a regular routine check-in so that at the end of the year, we're talking about more of the things that they've succeeded at, and some opportunities for them where they maybe need to work on some different things. But not, you know, I don't, nobody likes surprises, so.
So do you have a specific example where you coached someone that wasn't performing, and then they became a performer?
You know, it's, it's, I don't know that I've got a good example. You know, I've, I've been in situations where I've, I've had to discipline people for different things, no matter how much coaching I've, I've given on stuff. I think a lot of times, my approach, because I've been more forthright and more open, and when I've had regular check-in meetings with people, that I haven't had a situation where it's gotten to a point, and now we're having to work on something and coach, we're sort of doing it as we go along. So I, I've always tried to nip that stuff in the bud in advance, as opposed to sort of, you know, okay, now we have an issue, now I need to steer in this direction, and this is ultimately what it looks like. You know, I think a lot of times, if somebody's just not meeting whatever that need is, it's like, okay, so what are the challenges and issues that you're having, so we can, we can clear the path to allow you to sort of get back on, you know, the trajectory that you're working on, so. I can't, I can't think of a good example, so.
Question eighteen. Other than what you have already been asked about, please describe additional priorities you see for the city of Now Then.
Yeah, I think you, one of the things I, I had a question on was the capital improvement plan and what that looks like long-term, but I think I saw, is it in May or June, you approved a five-year plan for twenty to, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six? Or at least you talked about it, it was in the minutes, so. You know, that was always, I guess, you know, to me, the financial aspect is a key element. You know, I, I did read through the budget, but the budget's a bunch of numbers, and I like to understand the context behind the numbers. So for me, it's really spending some time with the council to really understand how you got to the numbers, and why, and what are some of the things that we're missing that we need to have conversations about? So for me, it's always getting a handle on the budget aspect and where we're heading, especially now that you're getting into budget season. Elections are coming up. I was asked if I've ever done elections before. Yes, I've done elections before. So for me, it's sort of getting reacquainted with that. Every county does it a little bit different, so I've been in, ended up in Ramsey, and this would be Anoka County, so getting a feel for what they do and the expectations of the city would be. You know, so a lot of it is going to be situational to start with, really kind of get a feel for like, what are the immediate things right now that are in front of the city that have to be best addressed? You know, the development thing, that's a key aspect to understand what's going on and what that's going to look like. You know, your comp plan talks about the city center, and there's a drawing in the comp plan about what the city center is, but what's the definition, and what, what does that role, does that play long-term in the city? You know, I, I think as development goes on, I, I know that there are concerns about home occupation permits and code enforcement and things like that. And trying to get a handle on those sorts of things and how the home occupations affect potential other development opportunities or growth, and how, you know, that aspect. So I think a lot of the things, you know, it's, some of it's, I think, really to hear from you guys what you see as some of the top priorities, and I know just reviewing some of the stuff, those are some of the things that I've heard or seen at some of the council meetings, and read through some of the information in the comp plan and some of those, those sorts of things. And so really kind of getting a feel for where you see you're at right now and where you want to get to be as well, so.
All right, that's the last of the official questions. Counsel, any follow-up? You have at this point? All right, it's your chance to ask questions of us. You've got ten minutes, right?
Well, you know, I guess, you know, the only question I, I really wrote down, I think through the position profile, having spent some time with Pat and talked to Frank in terms of some of the different things that are going on, you know, reading through some of the different aspects. Spent a lot of time talking about why I'm interested in being here. I guess, why, so you asked me why I would want to work here. Tell me why, tell me why I would want to work here. Convince me that when you called to offer me the job, that I should say yes.
Do you like horses?
I used to have horses when I was little.
Like fields and meadows? Do you like deer running across the road, and you have to hit the brakes for them? Some people are complaining about the bears attacking their bird feeders.
Oh, yeah.
So there's bear, there's deer, there's lots of wild animals in the community. So the biggest thing about Now Then, in my opinion, is its rural atmosphere. A lot of us ran on keeping Now Then rural.
Sure.
And there's sort of a slight debate in the city about, should it be five acres, should it be two and a half acres? Developers want, you know, make it two and a half acres so they can get more density. Some people who have large land masses here agree with them because that would mean more money for them, but then you'd end up with a neighbor, you'd end up with a lot of neighbors. So then those of us who have land who want to stay are like, no, I don't want high density next to me. I want to be able to look out my bay window and see the field that's there right now, and the farmer cutting it.
Right.
So that's a big aspect about it. Anyone else want to weigh in?
So, so what I do when I'm interviewing at, at work, I typically try and, and get the applicant to run to their car if I can. And if they don't go running, because of what I say to them, they say, okay, I got a good candidate here. So I tend to say, why do we want you here? You need to know some of the things. You, you mentioned, it's a small office. You met Natalie. You, you would be at the front desk. You don't, you don't get to sit and tell other people to do things, because there's nobody to tell to do.
Right.
So when Frank came in after twenty-six years as city manager, we said, a couple of big things up here. Burning permits and recycling. And he thought I was kidding, and he's learned painfully I wasn't. Building permits, obviously, we just had a lot of storms go through, and, and we're buried right now with roofing permits. So those types of things take a lot of time. It seems like a nuisance, but Frank said, what do you guys do with the burning permits? I mean, everybody's excited, weekends come and you're going to have a burning permit. We have large lots, and they have trees, and branches mow down, you put them into fifteen-foot piles, and you light them on fire.
Right.
If, if that, you know, your experience in Maple Plain should relate to what we're doing here, but those are, are important things here. Obviously, we have to be thinking long-term. But in the short term, it can be frustrating when you, you might be wanting to engage on utilities that are a long way off with people that get excited about recycling and burning stuff. And then what that means. So why do we want you here? We want somebody here who understands that aspect of the uniqueness of Now Then. And that's, that's, if, if, you know, we get excited about things like farmers' markets and threshing shows and stuff like that. Which, by the way, used to be the Rogers Threshing Show, but now it's Now Then for a few decades. We need somebody who's excited about that stuff as well. Who says, yeah, I can, I can stand at the front counter and write out a burning permit and engage somebody who thinks this is exciting, so. If that makes sense.
Yeah, no, I'm with you.
I think too, it's a good opportunity to, you know, see what we have today, and I think Jeff talks about Now Then's been a city for fourteen years, so it's relatively new in terms of city, and as we continue on in terms of, we have some growth and development from like new homes and new constructions. It's relatively low considering, considering like other cities that you're probably accustomed to, but I think there's a real opportunity to understand, how do we continue to develop internet? How do we repave all the roads that we've got that are all twenty years old? How do we continue on with some of the services that some of our, some of our residents that are moving in come to expect that they don't have here? And then how do we continue to manage a rural lifestyle with some development that can potentially improve the tax base? So I think those are some of the challenges that we face.
Anybody else? Frank? So I know you've had experience with contract planners and engineers and attorneys, I suppose. What's the difference in dealing with a contract department head versus a department head who's on your staff?
Yeah, I think what, what, in all honesty, what worked really well in Maple Plain is, you know, when I got there, it was always that, well, this is, these are our consultants. you know, when I got there, it was always, well, this is, these are our consultants and so I said, well, no, they're part of our team. So they were always part of the team and I think it was important to recognize that even though they're consultants and even though they get to go home at the end of the day after making a recommendation and leave everybody with the ability to make a decision, I think the fact that I really focused with them on, you have to be like you are a employee, you have to be like you're part of this team, you can't just be a consultant. That you have to take at heart a recommendation that you're making and, and be able to explain clearly with a why, because at the end of the day, I need you to own that recommendation or what information you're putting forward so that the council is trusting of that information. And that worked really well and I think, you know, I, 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 once in a while would catch flack that I would refer to them as staff, but in theory, they kind of are because they're part of the team and that's kind of how I, how I looked at it from that aspect. And so, you know, when I'm working with, you know, with the consultants, it's, it's always like, well, these are the goals that the city are trying to accomplish, so if something comes in, whether it's a planning aspect or working on a road project, how does that fit in with what the goals of the council or the community have established? To make sure that we're not making recommendations that are way off in right field in some respects. So that they, and I feel it's important that they're part of the team so that they're understanding that and that we're working together in the same direction. And so that, you know, they're putting their time and attention accordingly on those particular issues or things that we're working on from that aspect. So whether it's somebody on staff or consultant that you have, I, I try to look at it from the same standpoint that we're all together. We're all in this together and we're all sort of marching in the same direction and it's important that they're, they're on the bus with us, not staying off on the sidelines, so.
Don't read anything into this, but have you ever changed consulting staff?
Yes.
Process?
What's that?
What process?
I, I've done it where we've gone through an RFP, council got to the point, interviewed other candidates and then opted to stay with who they had for a variety of different reasons, but it's always, a couple of things, one, it's been an RFP. Sometimes depending on what the consult, what the estimated consulting contract was, we would go out if the council said, we want to, if I said I've had experience working with this firm or the council said we're aware of this firm, we would specifically go out and directly ask them to respond to the RFP. So usually for the most part, it's always been kind of a request for proposal. Sometimes it's been targeted in terms of who we felt was important in the role to be able to come in or based on experience or different things like that. But you know, it's always been, you know, the RFP process always in sort of included that here's the work that's to be done, this is the scope of services that are expected. And then I always try to include like, we want to get this done, but you know, here's some other things that could possibly be included, so if you kind of say, we want to get this done, but we can get the same, you know, this consultant over here is at thirty thousand and this one's at twenty, but we can add these other things into it and get more work, so at least you have kind of an all-in-all menu sometimes. But then it's always sort of the interview process. If it's a specific project, and you know, if it's a specific project, usually it's staff would review and bring in a recommendation in terms of what that would be, but if it's, you're changing from planning, planning firms, then I feel that it's important for the council to conduct the interview with the, you select, I can make a recommendation based on the materials, you can decide who you want to interview, we bring them in and we go through the process, then we have a discussion, you know, based on who you felt can serve, best serve the interest of the city. You know, I try to provide my input based on my knowledge and experience with different consulting firms that are out there, so. I haven't changed a lot, maybe one, one or two times where we've changed. But I think even having gone through the process and we have this consultant, we went through the process and decided that that was in the best interest, it stays also been a good process too, so.
Is it commonplace for you to have council members on what are otherwise staff committees?
Such as?
Hiring committee?
Hiring committee?
Hiring committee, CIP committee?
Yes, I've done it that way. In Maple Plain, when we were hiring staff, I had, staff got the initial applications, came in, the council assigned the mayor to be also reviewing, once the pool got narrowed, we reviewed and then brought in two or three, whatever ultimately the number was to, to do that. I prefer to have, when it comes to the CIP things or that kind of policy level stuff, prefer to have council on somebody assigned to be able to work with me on those types of things so that I'm checking, you know, what we heard at a council meeting and what ultimately the direction is, I think that's important. So that type of stuff, I would for sure embrace the ability of having somebody from council on that. Just like you would have a council liaison to the planning commission or other commissions that are out there.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Reynolds, Jason, appreciate your time.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
Yeah, can I actually add one thing? Just so that I, I, I hear what was discussed, which is, and it's some, one thing that was very evident, I kind of talked a little bit, it's, you know, the goal of the council to sort of maintain the identity. And the one thing that I preach, that I look for in an organization or a community is you understand what your identity is and you know what, what, what direction you want to go in and how you're going to achieve it. And so I think that with a lot of the experience that I bring, the background that I have on some of those sorts of things, also the ability of having been that first ever administrator and having to work the front counter at a city before and having to engage staff and get to know, I get to know the public from that aspect. So I understand and I appreciate how valuable a burning permit is to people. Believe it or not, we had them in North St. Paul too, which we can never figure out how that worked, but but we, but you know, we, and when I was in Rogers, there it was sort of the brush composting place. And that was, once that time hit, people were in. And it was the ability of interacting with people to see how important that was to them, that was something that they had all this brush that they wanted to get rid of. Can never figure out where people in town got all the brush from, but you know, it was coming from somewhere, so. I certainly understand there's a different dynamic between the day-to-day aspect that the residents expect and what they're looking for and the things that are important to them and the tasks that you guys have in terms of also trying to maintain that aspect, but the difficulty of what the future looks like and how you get there. So I think that's one thing I just, just want to leave with is it's, it's that balancing aspect of the stuff that you have to do today and the stuff that you have to do tomorrow and how they kind of meld, meld together and how you preserve some of these things while you're sort of maintaining or going after the things you need to accomplish in the future, so. With that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
What's your availability?
Oh, thank you.
So if you were to be chosen as the candidate, what's your availability to start with us?
Um, I could start tomorrow, I'm in, I'm in between right now, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Good to see you, Jason.
Thanks, Jason, good job.
Thanks, Jason.
Appreciate you coming in.
What did Mary, what'd you do, Mary?
I, I don't know, I did something to me.
Well, you know what, you're not supposed to be taking down fireplaces and all that stuff and so that's what happens, you're not a spring chicken anymore.
I know that. I'll have to show you the picture because I got the kitchen done and browned and the fireplace done.
I bet it's beautiful, yeah.
It was so pretty. I just got a big old mantle.
Did you do a lot of work in the house you purchased or was it the way it was when you bought it?
Uh, no, we kind of got it about halfway upstairs.
I went there one night and dropped some cookies on it.
This and all?
So you were.
That's why I knew unfortunately I should have.
Good seeing you and I thought that looks really modern and up to date, so I wondered if you'd done it.
So like the kitchen and stuff we didn't touch, but like people that built the place, their kid had special needs. So there was like a hospital room upstairs and there was tracks running through the ceiling because they, he wasn't mobile. So it was set up for an elevator, so it had an elevator shaft in it, so.
Oh, wow.
Got it all that stuff.
And that, that looks like a, a Wrangler.
It was, yep.
But they had it upstairs?
Yeah, well, there's an elevator to get to the full basement downstairs.
Oh, was he downstairs then?
Well, the elevator was never put in, but it had an elevator shaft.
Just in case, so what happened, what made them move, did he?
They lost it, bankruptcy.
So sad. It's a tough life sometimes, isn't it?
Yep.
How is your, how are your girls doing? Still riding horses?
Yeah.
You still running a lot to shows?
Yeah, although on Wednesday to South Florida.
Wow, so how long nights are you busy on?
Wednesday to Sunday, so we have Jeff by Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
So do you have a camper or do you have, do you have hotels or what?
No, front park or trailers, like I'm, has a living course, that's the second camper.
And so you all sleep in there? And then do you park it like an out?
At the, at the original tour.
So what you just did in the lake is not complete?
So, you know, we're in different classes, so someone's going to take a big old throw up.
So are you and her too?
Yeah, I'm on the side.
Really, your wife too? Wow.
Yeah, it's as much fun as you can throw away.
So you, you all, now the barrel racer, that's a daughter, where do you?
Oh, I have a barrel racer.
Yes, but only the one up there, yes. So how'd you get it to that? Have you done that yet?
Yeah, my friend's ridden horses, he's done a lot.
How about your wife?
That's how I met her.
She was a barrel racer.
She was a barrel racer gal, yeah.
And where'd you meet?
We had a horse named Jordan. All the time ago. So it was fast, so you were. All right, depends.
Depends on the year and it's right along.
Right now, my, my little daughter's probably the nicest horse she's ever owned.
Do you need to kick your horse?
Yeah, I would.
Well, it's been good.
But they didn't.
What do you think you called?
I didn't give her, I don't know.
We should have brought treats.
That's right, you can count on that.
Yeah, I thought I had, I thought I had.
I think you called Dennis and had him whip up something quick.
Oh, yeah, right. Yeah, I feel like Scrabble days.
I think at church one time about called the Oldleywood Games, like the Newleywood Game.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
People have been married for a long time up there. And, and one of the answers that had to do with what, you know, if you weren't there, what would your husband cook? And the gal said, he couldn't boil water. And his answer was, cook, I can't boil water. And then her dream trip, if he were to take her anywhere, what, where would her dream trip be at?
Sturgis.
Sturgis!
Wow. And we're like, oh man, she's going to kill you, and she gets up there, she says, my dream trip, Sturgis. So they knew each other pretty well.
I don't think Dylan and I would do that very. Yeah, that's what my friend Candy Bar was and he couldn't come up with that, we've been married for fifty years. I said, I know everything about you, coconut cream pie, we're all enjoying, I know everything you like.
We never did that, we didn't kiss her.
We were at this candy store, the way that's loose. Kismith candy, they got all kinds of stuff. My son's going through and he looks and there's some candy I'd never seen in my life. I think it's my mother-in-law's favorite candy. I'm like, really, I didn't know what that is. And he, he bought it, thinking, I think that's her favorite candy. Right, well, it was her favorite candy, I didn't even know what that candy is, but he remembered. She had said it one time, why do you even see this to even know, but she mentioned one time.
That's a good gift for someone who remembers when someone says they liked something.
That's what, the one picture Scott sent me. And then this is before, that little beverage bar, but that was before that. That was with the spacers still in there.
I was going to say, why are all those little?
Little green things, yeah.
Oh, I should probably move, I'm getting stiff.
Yeah.
Stiffer.
So this is, this is before the tile, the grouting of that little over by the wall there.
This is in the kitchen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Nice tile though.
Well, we've had the tile since we did the kitchen, but we just hadn't got it done. So I have a, a good friend who's a tileer by trade and so he came over. So that's it now.
Well, you know what, does he, is that his business?
That's what he did for a living, yes.
Well, would he, I mean, could you call him and see if he wants to, I want to bring to my fireplace.
Mine, mine was the second job and now then he did one right off, not far from you, off of.
Why don't you give me his name?
I've been trying to get soon to do our backs.
Yeah.
See, I want, that's nice, I want my fireplace, I want to take the old stuff off and put the new stuff on.
And we did, we, you know, when we moved in, it was pink tile and then gold, a golden oak mantel and stuff.
Did you take the tile off or did he?
So we, we took, I broke all but probably one piece out. And so scared. It was easy. And so then we, I found granite on
Oh, this part here.
Marketplace.
Did you make your mantel out of granite?
No, that's the hearth. And so, I found two pieces of granite that were island, pieces from an island.
Sure.
Out of some guy's kitchen, Scott drove up and got it. And then of course he had to have a two hundred dollar tool to polish the, yeah.
That's one down there.
So I took my one hundred dollar bargain and made it three hundred dollars. Still cheaper than if I had bought a big piece of granite. So that's what's on the floor, yeah, that's what the we made the hearth, this is that piece of granite.
Oh, sure, that's nice.
And then we're going to take off the carpet and take, take the same wood floor that's in the living kitchen and put it down in the living and dining.
Oh, my gosh, girl.
Yeah.
You know what, you're going to get all that done and then, I'm going to go to the bathroom, you're going to get all that done and then you're going to move.
I don't know about that.
Done that before.
Scott would have to start down, downsizing and
Yeah.
That would take ten years providing you never brought another thing in.
I've thought, I keep saying you gotta clean, you know, everything because what happens if something happens to us with kids? Well, you know.
And I don't have, well, I just told him there's going to be one heck of a, if you don't start marking stuff now, there's going to be one heck of a sale when you go with Scotty because I don't know the value of anything that he has. I mean, fifteen years and ten years ago, I said, it'll take us ten years to downsize and that's providing you never bring anything else in. And that doesn't, you know, that's not come true.
My mom, for Christmas, I've got two sisters who use those, yeah. That is Alexander dolls.
Oh, okay.
Which I, I think there's some value in them. When she's safe, she's collected, she's saved the box.
Yeah.
Three of us are like, why would we?
Why would we want that?
Why not?
Yeah.
But her, that was her thing, you know.
Yeah, well, it's even, you know, like with, you know, China. I have China that was not part of a wedding, it was when Powers went out of business, so, a few years back. And I mean, I don't use that, I ask the girls that are getting married, you know, do you, no, I don't want that, I get my Corral. You want to use that, I got Melmac, I like that. You know, they don't, they just don't do that and when I entertain, I have a set of like sixty-five white dinner plates that covers my family. And so that's what I use, I know, I don't take my China out, it's on a shelf in the basement. All that stuff, it's like.
Oh, and, and it's so much easier, you can give it to someone. But throw it away, no.
But again, they don't want it, I mean, I have, even, you know, I've got different pieces of furniture that, you know, one was my aunt's table that my brother, he did and anybody want this, no, I mean, I just.
Yeah. She was like, remember I go over to my mom's house? My wife's house, I remember this, when I come back, but, because I have always coming back. You know, she may have saved her, that my dad passed away a couple of years, you know, and she's always been on the cheap house.
Yeah.
And, and I take them home and we'll go to Goodwill or, you know, go somewhere. It's so much easier for me to do it than for her.
For her, yeah, yeah. So Jason, I heard Linda asking you, did, have you, was your house the way you wanted it when you moved in or have you done remodeling?
Picture your family.
I don't have it, isn't that terrible? Kind of a jerk, because I don't know, I just don't.
You don't keep pictures?
No.
Okay.
Not at first to me, but.
How many children do you have?
Four, four adults.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Where do they all live? Are they in your, your type of work?
No.
Nobody following in your footsteps?
No. So, Prior Lake, with two girls.
Okay, cool, so you see them a lot?
Yeah.
The grandkids?
Yeah.
The, okay.
Prior Lake again, with two boys.
Okay. Oh, my.
Yeah, it's nice, Prior Lake again, with
Took the elevator out? So you're six, Grant gets closed back in.
Well, and then it's savage, so one city.
You'd be needing that halfway you're left again. A lot of girls.
Yeah, it is.
So are they out on a boat with you in St.
They do, actually.
How old is Grant's age then?
Oh, gosh. She must be junior high, so she could be thirteen.
Yeah, the house. Huh?
No, not terrible. I told you, my husband doesn't even know my favorite candy bar, so I'm.
Oh, really? Okay. I don't remember who that is, it's been too long ago.
Remember her name.
Yeah. Yeah, our house is not a house we would have picked as far as the style and things like that.
It was forced on him.
But it was, my, it was forty acres. And that was enough. Didn't make any difference what it was, he wanted the forty acres.
Blackland.
So, that's.
Blackland.
So we little by little redo it to our liking.
I just.
We moved in in oh four.
He used to go to Burnt Evangelical Free Church.
It's, it's mostly wooded, we have about a acre and a half pond.
Now is that the historical power association?
So you can't do much to up the forty acres. You know, maybe.
Going to that church.
Maybe five, maybe eight is buildable. Um, and some of it, you probably could get a little bit more, but then you'd have to take a bunch of woods out. But it's all, it's all pretty low.
I always do.
Which is nice, 'cause then it's just wild. And around us is all, um, to the right of us is McCann Lake, so that's all a lake, and, and so that will never be demolished. And across the street, across the, the back of our lot is, um, farm. And that, I will farm for, as long as I'll be there.
Who was on it?
Larry.
Larry Black.
It's very secluded, it's like the end of a dead end road. The dirt roads are dirty.
I've seen Larry twenty years and all of a sudden, three days later, I see him.
And again, I would, I would never pick the house.
Come on in. Good. Okay.
If you want, just kind of introduce, we'll have you sit right in the hot seat.
Okay.
Hi Lisa, I'm Jason.
Nice to meet you, Jason.
Nice to you.
I'm Linda, nice to meet you.
Hi Linda.
Jeff Pilon.
Nice to meet you, Jeff.
Hi Lisa, I'm Joel.
Joel.
Hi, Mary Ringel, nice to meet you, Mary.
I have many.
Yes, Lizzy. Frank Boyles, nice to see you.
You too.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So this is Lisa Shattick.
Yes.
Can do here, so we are being recorded.
Okay.
You should have a green light in front of you.
I do.
Okay. And so, opportunity for, uh, be relaxed and take your time. Uh, we have eighteen questions, which Frank will be reading while we take notes. And, uh, about halfway through, Pat typically gives us a halfway indication, so you know that you're, you're on schedule. You're on question nine at halfway, that's perfect. Want to take more time or less time? After eighteen questions, uh, we, we leave the last question to you, so anything you want to ask of us, that's your opportunity at, at the end there, so. But we give you the, the complete hour, so take as long as you like. If you have a, you want a question repeated, obviously, uh, ask Frank to repeat it. And then his council, if they have a follow-up question, we, we allow that as well, so.
Thank you.
She already got the green light question, so that was successful. I can't tell the difference between red and green, sorry. Okay, Lisa, here we go. Question one. Please tell us what interests you about the Now Then Administrator position? And then secondly, highlight key qualifications that make you the best person for that job.
Okay, thank you. Well, I was interested in the position because I'd like to get back into a city administrator type role. I worked at the city of Greenfield only for about ten months as, as the administrator. I did not intend to be there such a short time. My mother was ill at the time, and the city clerk position opened in the city of Savage, which was closer to my home. And that way it was, allowed me to be closer to her to help out with her needs. She's since passed, so now I'm just kinda looking to get back in, thank you, into a, uh, administrator role again. Uh, I think that I have the experience. I have a number of years as essentially an assistant city administrator while I was working in the city of Farmington. I also obviously have the, the months that I was in Greenfield as an administrator and city clerk experience. Throughout my, uh, years of service, I think I've kinda touched upon almost everything that could possibly happen, you know, in a city. Um, one way or another, or at least have knowledge of it, even if I wasn't the one actually working with the project or the issue, you know, so. I think that background, that overall background is a positive.
So, so if I just follow, so that, what particular about Now Then, you want to get back into administration, but what about?
Well, I really did enjoy the city of Greenfield, and Now Then seemed like a similar type of city. A smaller city, a little more rural, um, so I was, that I guess is the appeal, the smaller city.
Question two. Please describe your supervisory and management style and how that facilitates teamwork among council, staff, and contracted employees.
Okay. Well, I, I, my management style is pretty much, uh, a teamwork type of management of staff. I truly believe that everyone brings something to, to the table. I don't claim to be the subject matter expert on, you know, utility billing or, or, um, parking recreation. You hire people to do a certain job, and you need to rely on their skills to, um, advise you, um, uh, make decisions and, um, implement things that are best for the city. I, um, I'm also the type of manager that I address the, an issue as it arises, I don't wait. Um, I think constructive criticism is, is beneficial. I think, uh, just that open, honest communication makes for a better working relationship, so that's pretty much my style. I'm not afraid to address an issue if I need to. And I think the other piece, as far as the council, that open communication is also what's, um, important for that city council-staff relationship. I wouldn't want anyone in the council to be blindsided somehow if they did not have information. So I would always try to encourage, um, staff to share, share information and, you know, so that we can, again, relay it to you.
Thank you. Question three. Please share examples of staff and coworkers that you have supervised or in some way influenced that have achieved in your organization or in another organization, uh, success because of the assistance you gave them.
Okay. Well, I have supervised, uh, multiple administrative staff that have, um, expanded their knowledge and skills. Um, for instance, um, in some of the city clerk duties. I've delegated different, different tasks down to the administrative staff to, like, licensing minutes, um, agenda preparation just to, um, expand their knowledge and, and help me, of course. You know, and we want to become a more efficient, you know, team. Uh, but, uh, so administrative staff, I've also, I've supervised a variety of different, different individuals over the years. Um, communications, staff, I've supervised even planning staff at one time. Um, as well as, for, like in the city of, of Greenfield, the public work staff, which was a small staff, but, but, um, I think a lot of, again, like I say, you hire people to, that is an expert in their job. I don't claim to know everything, but I, hopefully I can mentor them. And I think that I have, just, even if it's just in answering the phone more appropriately or handling a customer at the counter more appropriately.
Question four. Please describe a team that you recently led, uh, and the task that the team was responsible for. What did or did not make the team successful?
Well, currently, I'm leading our laser fiche committee, 'cause City Savage has had laser fiche for many, many years, however, it was never used properly. Um, documents.
What did you say, I'm sorry?
Laser fiche, it's the, our document scanning, um, software.
Okay.
And over the years, uh, I think items were just scanned in, just kind of haphazardly. And so we're working to, uh, to organize the file folders and get things into the program so they're more searchable and to try to get to a more electronic filing system, one that's eas- easier to use, obviously. And used appropriately, because right, because over the years, it, it, it's a program that you pay every year a certain fee, you know? And it's just not being used properly. So I'm leading a committee of department representatives from each department, and we're going department by department and going through files and organizing and working with the vendor to, um, streamline this. And it, I know they've, they've had, from what I understand, committees like this put together in the past, but they've never gotten as, gotten as far as we have. So I guess, I think that's good. I guess, I think I did a good job there. I mean, we're, we're making progress, put it that way. It's slow.
Question five. Some councils are more involved in day-to-day affairs. How would you manage this in the city's best interest?
Well, I think, again, it comes back to that communication piece, as far as communicating with the council. I think it's just extremely important for the administrator and council to have that, um, that good rapport. Uh, I think there are some cities I know where council is very involved. And then there's cities that they're not very involved at all. You could go weeks without, well, not weeks, because you always have council meeting. But other than a meeting, you don't see someone. So I think it's a, a matter of finding that balance. And as a, an administrator, you're supposed to be the professional, and I think that you are the one, you are there to help guide the elected officials. So I think, again, I'm, I'm the type of person that would not be afraid to bring up a topic and discuss it if I think something needed to change.
Question six. How have your work actions benefited previous employers?
Well, I think my work actions, a lot of mine is in my customer service background as well as my management, uh, background. I've had, I had a human resources director at one point tell me that I made her job easier. Because as far as, you know, working with my employees, um, whether positively or negatively, I'm, I did it. I mean, I just, there's nothing that I'm, I, I wouldn't, um, address if I think it was a matter of ethics or policy. And by the same token, if someone needs, if someone is do a compliment or a good job and give, and I, I'll do that as well. I think it's important at a council meeting, you know, if city council praises me for a job well done, and I really don't feel that I'm the one who did it, but it was my staff, I would definitely give them the credit. Did that answer your question?
Uh, yes.
I hope so.
Uh, question seven. Describe a controversial situation that you were part of, which involved public scrutiny and the media. How did you handle the situation and what was the outcome?
Well, I have a long history in elections, so I typically do not want to have your name in the paper when it comes to elections, that usually means something went wrong. Um, when I was the elections coordinator hired at Scott County in 2012, I had never worked county elections before. That was a presidential election. We were processing ballots for over twenty-eight hours.
Wow.
I don't know, you might remember that, Frank. And so, it was a matter of the machines not working properly and, um, just having to rerun ballots and whatnot. And it was a lesson learned because I, not knowing how the county, I came from city elections and going to county, which is obviously tenfold. The tabulators, I made a suggestion to hopefully streamline the, the count process. Well, it turns out that my predecessor was right in not making that change for streamlining because what we did was put on the memory cards more than one precinct. You know, thinking that you should, you could put more than one precinct on a card so that you wouldn't, you, um, don't have to change the cards out so much, and then you just program them accordingly to save time. Well, it didn't save time. Because if you had a, in, if you had an issue with the ballot, you'd have to then rerun them all instead of just the one precinct, so. I learned my lesson there. So that was, um, we changed, we got new tabulators after that, which was needed, and then, um, changed that back. But, um, and of course, that ended up in the paper and the media.
Question eight. Describe how you believe the relationship between the city administrator and the city council should function.
Okay, again, I think that, I think, I kinda touched upon that before. I think that the city administrator, it's the administrator's job to make sure council's informed. I think that the administrator is there, the role is there to help guide the council. We are supposed to be professionals and educated in some of this work that we do. And, um, I think that, and I know that not all council members are when they run for election. I think a lot of, I think it's important that council, um, maybe attend some of the trainings like the league, um, provides. If there is a new council member who has never served in, on a public board before, uh, those types of things are really beneficial. And I think the administrator's role is to help guide that person so that they can be the best council person that possible. And again, if there's questions, um, from council on an issue, an item on the agenda, it's the administrator's responsibility to do what they can to answer those questions, do the research, and make sure that, um, the council is, has the materials and is prepared to make the appropriate decisions.
Question nine. Please describe your involvement in budgeting and financial processes of your organization as well as your experience in long-range financial.
Okay. Well, I, when I worked in the city of Farmington, I, uh, worked as part of the management team, and we collectively put together the city budget as a whole. We sat together and, um, discussed each other's needs and did, and kind of prioritized among one another who, uh, what, uh, what might stay in the budget, what might have to get pushed off to another year, and how things are funded and so on and so forth. There, and when all said and done, we all supported each other and, um, and came out supportive of the budget that was, was created. We did have a finance director, so as far as running the numbers and that kind of thing, I did not do. That person did that. I was responsible for a number of departmental budgets though. Elections administration, the council budget communications, community development at one time. And then of course, in the city of Greenfield, I was responsible for putting the budget together. I was there long enough to put a budget together. In Greenfield, so with the help of city staff. And we were able to present a budget to the, to the council. As with many budgets, you know, we had many, many different reiterations of, you know, from what started and then the final budget looked a lot different because of different wants, needs, priori, priorities. So it was, it was challenging, you know, a little bit, it, because there wasn't a lot of money to work with. Council didn't want to raise taxes. Greenfield's in Hennepin County, there's a lot of residents that did not like their taxes. But the, a, a large part was Hennepin County taxes. And that was kind of a sore spot with some of the residents. So it was kind of a touchy, touchy budget process, so to speak.
Have a follow-up on that, if you're done?
No, that's fine.
What was the budget in Greenfield?
What was the?
I can already remember.
Million, two million? It was four years ago, almost, I think.
So follow-up too. Have you done like capital planning and tying in with bonds and long-range, short-term planning for the city's financials?
I've been involved in the like capital outlay discussions and that, that as far as the bonding, I really haven't, I'll be honest. Like I said, most of the cities I worked at, we've had a finance director that that's their responsibility. I know in Greenfield, we did have some bonds that, and we worked with the, our bond consultant, financial advisor.
Question 10. What have you previously done to educate new members about the finances of the city and to keep members apprised of changes in the budget? Members meaning council members.
I think, I'm trying to see if I have an example. I don't know if this really answers the question, but like a simple example, when I was in Greenfield, Greenfield was similar to this where they had a separate city hall that they used for their meetings. And it was used only like six hours a month. And it was costing the city money to keep it going. I put together a proposal to, to move city council meetings to the city offices and redefine the offices and re, I don't want to say redecorate. Remodel, there we go. So to allow for an actual, you know, type of deus and city council environment. And we did that with, I did that with the help of city staff. And it wasn't budgeted for, just kind of did the best we could to do it as, as inexpensively as possible and find the money within the budget. So as far as Zach was just presenting that information to the city council on how we could actually do that and how it would benefit in the future. And then after I left, and part of that was a demolition of the old city hall, which that did occur. So, and I think they were pleasantly surprised how it turned out as far as reusing certain items and just doing it on a budget. I'm really not sure if I answered that question, but that's an example that came to mind. And as far as like the budget itself, when presenting the budget and how it affected certain taxpayers and homeowners, I took all the council's addresses and used that as an example of how an increase would affect different, different housing price points, so to speak. Obviously anonymously, it was just property number one, two, three. No one knew what properties they were. But because the council, you know, all their, all their homes were slightly different, you know, on different price ranges. So I thought it was a good illustration.
Eleven. Describe how you would communicate and build trust with the city council and staff.
Communicate? I would just, as far as staff, I'd be there for them. Honesty. I think it's important to, to have that open communication, get the tools. Tools, if you're able to supply the tools the staff needs, it's much easier for them to do their job. Makes a, makes for a happier workplace. I think just getting to know staff, getting to know the city council, maybe on the side, not on the side, but just, you know, be, say before a council meeting or after a council meeting or city staff, get to know them, what's, what their, what their likes are. Like what they enjoy doing in their off-hours, their personal life a little bit. I think, you know, getting that, establishing that personal relationship is important. And I think that builds trust.
Thank you. Uh, question 12. How would you balance the residents' desire to remain rural and the developers' desires to develop the community?
Isn't that what your comprehensive plan is supposed to do? I think you could just, you kind of have to balance it and just listen to all sides and try to, try to determine what is best, best for the city. Not every situation is the same. Of course, you're going to have developers wanting to come in and develop your whole city if you let them. That balance piece is important. And it sounded, sounded like, I looked at the comprehensive plan a little bit and it sounded like the intent was to keep the lots larger, so maybe a little bit more rural than, you know, city blocks of new housing. So, yeah, I guess. Other than just trying to get, you know, gather the information and try to balance, I mean, if you have to, it's not always a good thing to develop and develop and develop.
Question 13. Tell us about your experience working with police, fire, and emergency responders to create, maintain, and exercise an emergency management plan.
I did participate in an emergency management group with, when I was at the city of Greenfield. That was with actually Hennepin County, not Hennepin, but West Hennepin, maybe it was. Variety of cities and first responders were there, officers, fire, city administrators. I've gone to training in that respect there. I also have worked with, just in the cities I've worked at, like the city of Farmington, I was part of the management team, so we put together our emergency management plan and everyone had a role within your own department. I've worked closely with the police in various roles. With elections, with like liquor licensing, that type of thing, and different city complaints, maybe code complaints and that type of thing that have come across our, my desk. So I think it's one of a respectful relationship. And it, you know, at least in City of Savage now. And I work with a number of the, or the captains that are there in a lot of the things that I'm involved in.
Question 14. Describe the steps you would take to network and develop relationships with neighboring city administrators.
Um, I think just reaching out and introducing myself, maybe getting involved in different community groups. Maybe, and of course, there's organizations. I mean, there's different, different groups that, that, that you can become a member of. Like for instance, I mean, for the city clerks, I'm part of the MCFWA group. I think that, yeah, again, I'm not afraid to reach out. I'm not afraid to introduce myself. I think getting involved in like county groups, I know when I was in Farmington, I, I attended many like Dakota County meetings where it was meetings with administrators or assistant administrators that met like once a month on various topics, like those. For like me, I can't remember what the name of the group was called, but, but I know that's not unusual in other counties. I know like for instance, Scott County, and I know you're familiar with some of the management team groups that are, are set up there, scale and whatnot. So I think it would be important to get involved in those types of groups so that other communities and community members know who, who I am.
Question 50. Describe your experience working with other units of government to develop service partnerships.
I've worked with, in my county elections experience, worked with all the cities in Scott County, all the town, all the townships, all the school districts regarding elections. So I established a number of relationships there. I worked, I've participated when I was in the city of Farmington. I served as a city representative on our, the local festival board. Also the, we did a community expo and that was with a number of other community members and school district members. I served on that committee as well to put that together. The Cable Communications Commission, that was one that was Farmington, Rose, Mountain Apple Valley. I was a representative for that, for broadcasting council meetings and other, other promotions and programs. Did I answer your question? I feel like I'm rambling.
Question 60.
Did a good job.
So this kind of takes off on the last question too. Describe how you'd become involved in the Nowa community.
Again, I think find out, if there's a cha, is there a chamber, chamber of commerce?
Anoka County.
Pardon me?
Anoka Chamber.
Okay. Possibly getting involved with the chamber. I know a lot of communities have rotary and that type of thing. Other civic community groups. Even, even introducing myself to, you know, the school district representatives, the church representatives within your community. And, you know, or even business members and let them know, you know, who I am and, you know, let, if the city can do anything for you, let us know. You know, obviously within the realm of what we can do, but.
Good.
So I think just to offer that is important.
Question 17. Describe your experience in developing, coaching, and holding employees accountable.
I've had a number of years as a manager. I've managed many people over the years, probably 30-plus years. I started out in the retail and hospitality industry. So, and then ended up obviously in local government. So I have supervised and managed a number of different positions and responsibilities. I've had to discipline, I've had to terminate. I've also believed that performance evaluations on a regular basis is important. I, right now, I do all my employees' annual performance evaluations on time. People have to know how they're doing. And again, I don't wait till an, an evaluation to, to correct a behavior or correct or even commend one's behavior. I don't know, it all just comes back to communication and being able to coach and mentor. And as I stated before, that's my management style, working with the employees. I, I don't really, I've always kind of said I wouldn't ask an employee to do anything I wasn't willing to do myself.
Question 18. Question 18. Other than what you've already been asked about, please describe any additional priorities you see for the city of Nowa.
Other than what I've already been asked about? Well, I met Natalie. She showed me around city hall. It sounds like with her and, is it Adrian? That you have some good staff members there, willing to really put, put their best foot forward. Sounds like they've really come through. But it looks like they have a lot of work too. I think there's, I talked about our, my laser fiche project in Savage. I think that you might have a similar one from what she told me. So, but I think in, and I think one of the things the administrator would need to do is somehow, it sounds like they have a heavy workload right now. Somehow get, get, get to a place where they don't feel so overwhelmed. Whether that's chipping in and helping yourself or hiring additional staff or temporary staff or consulting or, or new software, just, you know, obviously that those things all have to be budgeted for, you know, and, and they don't happen overnight. But I think that it, I think that's one thing that will, would need to be done because I think they seem like they're overwhelmed.
That's all.
All right, council, any follow-up? Right now, it's your chance to ask us questions.
I'm trying to think. I'm not sure if I have any really. I know I'm supposed to. But I guess, what do you see a typical deus? Or maybe that's a question for Frank.
I think most of the follow-ups have been actually questions for Frank. We've taken them, but Frank would know better than we do in a lot of them, so.
What was your question?
Typical day for the administrator.
I don't know that there is really a typical day. I mean, you could have high-volume telephone traffic, in-person traffic. It'd be low, it can be low and high. There are two things that certainly a lot of people will be engaged in is recycling and burn permits. Very important in this community. There is a lot of permit, building permit, roofing permit.
There is a lot of permit, building permit, roofing permit, those kinds of things that, uh, generate a great deal of activity, despite the fact that we use Minspect, we get involved in some of the lower level, uh, permit issuance, they do the higher level, plan checks, full houses, and then we have a variety of con- contract folks that do things like engineering and, um, so there's interaction there, most often by phone. So I, I wish I'd give you a typical day. Kind of one of the cool things about it is that, uh, you can expect to be engaged in something and maybe veer off one way or the other. All, all things that need to be done. But if you don't like, uh, handling a number of things at one time, probably not the right profession, but you've already seen that, I'm guessing.
I, I would probably describe myself as a multitasker, but as a city clerk, you kind of have to be.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm Ray.
I have a follow-up to her, uh, to Lisa in regards to what she talked about, about the office staff. Now, you didn't have a chance to meet, was Public Works?
No, I only met Natalie.
Okay. So, what experience do you have in looking at an existing organization and determining what a new organization should look like as far as administrative, the types of positions based on, um, the functions that we do, um, you know, how, do you have any experience in that?
I do, I have, I was involved in, um, in the city of Farmington, we did a reorg for, with all the administrative staff citywide, and just kind of sat down, um, all the supervi- all of us managers, supervisors, um, sat down and reviewed, um, the different tasks that each individual was doing, and determined, okay, is this really the right area that this person should be working in? Should, should he or she be performing this task, or is it more suited for this person in their role? And we, we developed a new plan, changed some people's roles, responsibilities, um, presented it to the individuals, of course, it didn't, you know, the, you know, you ruffle s- ruffle some feathers with some, but in the end, it turned out fine as long, because we were able to explain the reasons why, you, you weren't just doing it because, you know? So, I've, I've done that, and then I've also, um, even in Savage, made recommendations in, on, um, certain tasks for certain individuals, um, that's worked out pretty well. One individual in, in particular, I've tried to push a little further and educate, and it's been successful. Thank you.
That's good to hear.
Jason, did you have something?
Nope, I'm good. So that administrative staff, how about other staff? We talked about, some of our people are contracted, we also have Public Works, there's roads and parks and, have you, what's your experience in working with those?
I've worked with other, um, with con- with, um, consultants. In the city of Greenfield, we did a, we had consultants like for, for inspections, engineering, planning, so I have experience working with them as well. I find that, you know, the consultants are working for you, so they're pretty respectful of what your needs are, um, and the working relationships have, have been, uh, fairly good. I think that, you know, obviously, if there's an expectation, you need to, to relay that to that particular consultant, um, if they're not meeting that. As far as other staff, I've also, while I've managed a number of different positions and, over the years, but, um, right now, primarily administrative. I did, at one time, supervise our city planners in the city of Farmington, and I don't know, I'm not a planner. So, you know, that's where, again, you hire people that are the subject experts and you, you trust that they, they do their job and, and you learn from them as well, and that's what I did. We had one that there, I had to address some issues with, you know, um, not afraid to do that. So I have, and then when I was there, I was also the acting city administrator at the time, so everyone supposedly reported to me, but we had, we had such a good staff, it wasn't really, it wasn't, it was pretty easy. Good for you, so.
All right. Anything else in council? Anything else for us?
I don't think so.
All right. Should we, um, select you as our candidate, what, what is your availability?
Um, I'm not sure, probably... It looks like today.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth. Well, I'd probably at least have to stay through the primary. Very mad.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
So.
Yeah, not a good time to be walking out.
Yeah, not the best.
No, so.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes. Appreciate you coming, Lisa.
He's trying.
We won't let him walk out.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lisa. It's gonna be interesting, huh? Oh, we've got good candidates, that's for sure.
Good job, Pat. Yeah.
Yeah, good job. Brought some good people in. Oh, okay. Sure is.
What's that?
Certainly might not agree in this one.
You and me?
For once. Usually, usually I do.
I know, may not agree with the answer, but if you agree with the process, everybody's gotta be happy, right?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Said you may not agree with the answer, but if you agree with the process, that's all you can, uh, that's all you can go for, right? So, score them the way you want them, and we'll see how it goes.
How about if someone might come up with about the same score? Is that a problem? They're good in one thing and not in another against it.
Yeah.
Well, I think what we'll do is kind of similar to the last time, we'll go around and give you your top two candidates, and then we'll... Kind of work, work on it from that perspective, yeah, unless someone has another s- suggestion for another way to do it.
No, I'm good with that.
Open to that as well.
I know.
We're just saying, we'll probably be similar to what we did last time, just score on the table, uh, you know, top one, top two, uh, first and second, and then launch into discussion based on that, if that sounds good.
But this time, we actually use their names?
Yes, yes. Public, that's public information, so, yeah. And then we'll just, yeah, as we get into hot spot candidates, I mean, some of the information that you have, the background check and some of that stuff is, uh, confidential, so, um, put the resume, information, all the other that stuff.
So, would you say we're giving, not our totals, just the ranking numbers?
Just the rankings.
Just the one and two.
Okay. I have a question with Pat, and everybody's back in the room. So Pat, I have a question.
Okay.
We were provided information from Frank, um, about two candidates to, um, one was an email, providing some information, and then the other one was two phone numbers to call, um, to contact about a candidate. How do we fit that information into our rating?
So it would be tied into kind of their, their background, their history?
Yes.
So I, I, I guess I would just factor that in, you know, with the resume.
Under experience?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, in that general area.
Okay, thank you.
So, yep.
Those calls are tough to go by anyway, because you don't know what the situation was.
Yeah.
You don't know if there's personality conflicts, you don't know what's going on. You're getting one side.
Right.
So it's tough.
Yeah, no.
It's tough to put too much weight on it, I think, personally, everybody thinks di- can think differently.
Yeah, there's a lot of variables that take place in those situations that we're not aware of.
That's right, and we're all in, in those situations where we wish we could get our side out, but we can't.
Yes, yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay, you want top two?
If you would, please.
Uh, Jason was my, Jason Zimmer was my number one candidate, and Robert Bar-
Barbian?
Barbian was my number two candidate.
My number one was Robert, and Scott was my number two.
My number one was Scott, my number two was Jason.
My number one was Scott, my number two was Robert Barbian.
My number one was Scott, and my number two was Lisa.
Interesting, I like that.
All right, we had three with Scott. Any thoughts on, on that, obviously?
He was my number five candidate.
Okay.
Cause he has zero experience in doing the job, and he has zero education as background. And he's worked for Center Point Energy for twenty-eight years. So, I find it super hard, when we have four other candidates that have city administration background and experience and education, that we put the guy with zero education and zero background experience as the top candidate.
Yeah, I, I, I see your point, because we are picking somebody that doesn't have any.
And when we went down this road last time, we had problems.
True. Can you think about it?
And we think the reason that Frank was super successful is because he had a ton of experience, and he had a ton of background. So that's, but, like, I said before, I may not be happy with the choice, but I'm fine with the process, so, that's my, I mean, that's how I ranked him, and that's how I saw it.
I think it's a good insight.
Who was your first?
My first was Jason. And I looked at, like, Jason's interview, uh, cause when I interview people, I like to do, like, what's the situation, what's the task, what's the action, what's the result? And like, if you look at Jason's answers, he actually gave specific examples, he gave specific actions of what he did, and he gave specific results. If you look at most of the other candidates' answers, it was good communication, people person, be there all the time, first person on the job, very generic answers to questions. When you ask about, hey, how, what's your budget process? I'm gonna meet with the mayor before the council meeting, I'm gonna do a quarterly update on the council with a projection on the budget, and I'm gonna give you, uh, status weekly or bi-weekly from an email standpoint. Those were like very specific versus, I believe in open communication. So I'm, again, I was just like, that shocks me a little bit that normally, we're not quite this far skewed, but that's, that's what I look for in the interview, and that's why I believe Scott, or Jason interviewed the best, and I thought Scott interviewed the worst when you go by, what's the situation, what's the task, what's the action, and what's the result?
What's happening is that, I think personally, we're responding to personality more than anything else, I think.
Yeah, like, I gave everybody like a one, two, three on the, on the questions, and there's eighteen questions, so that adds up to fifty-five points. So, Scott got like threes on what he believes in his best for Nowthat, or what Nowthat needs to work on, how we even engage, I thought those were like really good responses and answers. When you talk about, what's the budget process, has he been involved in bombing, does, it's like, he doesn't have any of that experience, so, and the community, I think we're, I think we're headed for a problem if we bring somebody in with this team with zero experience.
I think you're probably right there, we did go down this road before, and it didn't We did go down this road before and it didn't work.
Well, I will say we went down this road because they didn't have any, any private sector leadership experience either.
Yeah, but we're picking a person who doesn't have any, any government. I mean, he has not worked in these settings at all. And he has, he's brought up a really good point. Everybody's been so very, very happy with Frank and, and you, you are very happy with him, both of you. And so, I would think we would want to keep in that avenue to keep everybody happy. And so, you need someone that has that experience, that insight, has done it before, knows what to do. I don't know. I, I guess I, I respond to the personality as the truth is be told. And that's, that's my, that's me. I'm very personality and he's, he hit all the right buttons about the town.
He, I mean, he absolutely did. He did a great job there.
Yeah, and it made you feel like, wow, he likes this town and he knows it and, and he's gonna... But then I also hear your side on that, he doesn't have experience, so I may have to change my vote.
Well, so, so I think to Mary's point, if, if we followed up with the, the others, Pat and I had talked about references. And I think that, that as you look at the references, I think Pat did a good job with the references he called. Obviously, candidates give you people who are, hopefully they're giving people that would support them in that. And what I liked about Pat's report was he was very specific about things that he inquired as to examples of why they would be successful, which, which was helpful. And we didn't, we didn't get overwhelmed with that. But as Pat said, you're going to find out more doing your own work on the internet, asking around. And, and I did contact the people that, on the phone numbers.
So did I.
I also was at the league meetings that week and was able to ask. And people that, that knew the candidates very specifically. City of Savage was there, people that from North St. Paul were there. Didn't talk to the people from Maple Plain. But other administrators in particular, you know, I said, we're looking for administrator, here's the people. And, and they said between the consultants that were at the meetings and the administrators, they pretty much know everybody. And heard some good things, heard the cautions. Not just from Rogers and North St. Paul, but people that said, I know these people, let me talk to some other people. And initial response was the, give them a chance to explain themselves before you judge on it. Later, I was searched out by some of those people that started asking around and they said, what we know about now then, what we know about these candidates, some of them aren't going to be a good fit. One of the expressions was it's my, my way or the highway. Was part of the problem they had between council or between their subordinate staff. And, and one of the things they found out that was after there was a separation, the staff was more free to talk. They didn't say anything to the administrator or to the other staff members at the time because this was a supervisor. But afterwards, the council then found out things that had they known earlier, the separation would have taken place earlier. So, those are things that were unsolicited. People got back to me and said they were asking amongst other people that knew them and sent up the red flags. And that was, that was part of it. And one of the specifics was, great interview, in this case in particular, great interview. I got sucked in by the interview and then the performance wasn't there. And a person who felt that they generally didn't understand really well when they're interviewing people, it didn't strain a good interview and a bad interview. Said the interview was great, the, the actual performance and the relationships were not once they got in. And they, somebody that hadn't worked with them but knew them indicated that would be very direct at both with staff and with council. And knowing what they knew about now then, didn't think it would be a good fit. So, that's, again, you're not going to get that from references provided by any of the candidates, but that's some of the background.
The problem is with that is that you're talking to people that you put a lot of them at a disadvantage and one has a great advantage because you can't, you haven't found anybody to talk to about that other one. Because he's, he's not in the system as far as your other talking, someone who's administrator.
The two of them, the one that dropped out and, and Mr. Lehner were not in the system. So, they weren't known by those people. The other ones were known.
I know, so I say that.
So, I went off the internet on that.
Yeah, well, yeah, I don't trust the internet on much, but okay.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying that, that if there's good or bad, it's generally there. I mean, there, there were some things that popped up on the internet.
But think about all the bad things that are on the internet because of what happened here and now then. And yet, those that are involved know that some of that stuff isn't necessarily true.
Well, no, no, I'm, I'm saying on the ones that we didn't have administrative contacts, I looked at, at reports on the internet and they actually, I didn't find negative, but I did find some going reports.
Yeah. I reached out to the, one of the city council members in Rogers and I got some feedback as well. It wasn't, it wasn't, this is the best guy you're ever going to hire, but it wasn't like a big red caution flag either. So, I'm like, all right. So, I thought it was, I thought it was a meaningful parting kind of is the, the feedback I got. So, and I'm not saying it's like, that was the number one choice I had. My number two choice is very close. I, I'm just, I'm, the way I scored it, I'm 40 points different between Scott and my number one and two choice.
Who was your number two?
Yeah, it was your two.
Bob or Robert?
Yeah, he was my number two also.
Okay, so my number two as well. So, who else voted for Bob, Robert? I mean, there's three of us right here who voted him number two.
Well.
Did I say maybe, Bob, I might have said Jason, did I?
Nope, you had Linda. Linda, you had Robert as your first.
And, and Scott, right?
As their second.
Yeah.
Yep. And then both, Jason and Joel.
So.
And Robert as second.
Jason and Robert, I mean, the way I scored it, Jason had more points. It's very close. I'm just, you know, they both interviewed pretty well. I'd say Robert didn't interview quite as good as Jason. I think they both have good, you know, I gave them both equals on experience and equals on education. I mean, they both have a, they both have like a city planning administration background with several certifications. They both have years of experience doing what we need them to do. They both have years of budgeting, years of planning, CAPA. I mean, all the stuff that we said we weren't good at a year ago, they had, both had very good experience in that. I thought that Jason interviewed a little better just from what I scored him, but I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm a ways off from everybody else's number one candidate. So, I want to talk through that. If, and if, like I said, I may not agree with the candidate, but I agree with the process. If everybody else is seeing something that I don't, I'm okay with that. I want to understand how do we think someone with no education in city planning or administration, no certifications and no experience is going to come in here and make this thing click?
I, I, I have to agree when I think about it.
Well, when I, when I scored him on my sheets.
Which one?
Let me ask a question. When I was scoring Scott on my own personal sheets, I just was making in the communication skills clarity of ideas, innovative articulated vision, this one, he pretty much, in my opinion, he nailed every single one of those, in my opinion. On my other sheet where we had the 19 questions, each time he gave an answer to a question, it was what I was looking for personally. As we went through the various employees or candidates, they answered these questions less and less to where I thought it was what we were looking for. So, my number five candidate answered the questions least to my satisfaction. So, between the two sheets, the 19 questions and the rating form, he was the top in both. Not in one or the other, but in both. So, to me, he, he ranked the highest because of that. The other thing I found attractive about him was the longevity he had. And some of these other candidates, you know, four to five years and some of them months. So, that weighed in as well. I liked his RCA, it scored in one of the top. I mean, I, I ranked three people as giving a five on the RCA, one person has a four and one person has a three. So, his RCA ranked high, the highest I could give him, he ranked on it as well. He ranked low in his education. I ranked him the lowest in education of all my candidates. But he scored so high in other categories.
But how did you, how did you rank him in experience?
I, I ranked him pretty high because he has, you know, large organization, being in charge of a lot of people.
But what about city experience?
Well, I was just going by leadership experience. So, anyways, I'm just explaining my position to Jason because he, he wants a little transparency. I'm trying to give his, my thought process as best as I can. And there wasn't a question that he answered that I was concerned with. There was plenty of answers I heard tonight and on Tuesday where I could tell that the candidate was struggling. I didn't see any struggling. In fact, he brought up copious amounts of examples of, you know, one of them was, how are you going to reach out to the other communities? He's like, well, I know this person, I've worked with that person, I've worked with this person. He was simply, one would call that name dropping. No, that's already a built relationship. Well, what are you going to do to build relationships? Well, they're already there. So, to me, that's already a strength in this particular question answer. Are you going to build relationships? They're there.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that's just one.
Yeah, that's a good one.
I think the other part was relationships weren't there. He mentioned the league, he mentioned, you know, other contacts where he's already been reaching out to. That way he might be deficient. He's reaching out. He mentioned the elections, he mentioned the budget, you know, areas that he's got it in the private sector, but he recognized there was a difference in the public sector and the private sector. I think to, to the point of, I, I agree with what Joel said on the scoring. The, the longevity, you know, looking at, at his information here, it sounds like, it looks like he went, started school and then took a job offer and kept advancing in the organization he was in without having to go back and complete a degree. So, the education part was, it's, it's the, he learned as he went. Obviously, he advanced to a senior position in a large organization. I think that he, he was successful in the private sector, which has always been an important part for me. I think cities should be operated like investment businesses out there. But there is public sector experience you have to have. The fact that he's been involved with administrators and with leadership in cities, all the cities he's been servicing, it isn't like he has no experience or no awareness of it. It sounds like he knows what he's getting into and he's got, you know, he has to continue learning in that role. But it's something that I think that.
Well, that's just what we hired last time, someone who needed to hire, yes, someone.
No, they didn't have any, they didn't have 28 years of private experience.
But we still hired someone that we said would be learning and growing in that role and that was what we were looking for and that did not work.
And our support staff has got seven months of experience.
So, that makes me a little bit nervous.
Well, I, I think there's a significant difference of no, no private sector leadership and 28 years of it.
Still, it's still the same. Well, I hear what you're saying, but I still think we're going down the same road we went before and it didn't work for us, that's all. I'm just hoping that.
Frank, we asked you last time, how did you rank them? These are number one and two.
I'll give you my three that I threw out right from the start because I'm really big on experience. I've been doing this for 45 years. You don't just pick this stuff up, you know, in a couple of weeks or months or years even. So, Lisa's definitely out. Zach is definitely out and Scott is out. So, I had Robert and Jason and each of them has their downside. There's just no question. But they're different downsides.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I mean, that's, that, that is, I think Scott was very personal. I think he did an okay job in the interview. I don't think from, you know, the way I interview people and I'm used to it, he didn't interview very well from specific examples and results. My big concern is we have a staff of three. They have a combined 14 months experience and we're bringing someone over there with zero public experience. So, that is my concern with us getting into this. It's like, I'm looking at what, let me say, be before Frank and after Frank, what we believe is kind of the secret sauces. Somebody came in that had a bunch of leadership experience, had a proven track record with city planning and city administration. And I think we all believe that it's running smoother now than it was before Frank.
Yeah, everybody believes that.
So, and we're getting back to like the delighters of like this three binder. It's like a deliter for Mary and Jeff.
Yes.
Isn't the best for me, I don't really care, but it's like, I think it's, it's better than me flipping through everything and trying to lose track. So, I mean, that is a cool thing, right? And Mary and Jeff like really, really, really appreciate the couple emails a day and the updates and I've begun to appreciate that too. So, I'm just like, there's experience there and there's, that's good communication, which I think another candidate could bring, but I'm telling you, I, there's a lot of stuff that probably needs to be fixed yet that Frank hasn't gotten to. And someone with zero experience is going to have a hard time understanding what to even work on because they don't know. So, that's, that is like my concern.
Pat, if you add up all the numbers of the rankings, is it safe to say the one with the highest numbers is the least desirable and the one with the least amount of numbers is the most desirable? If you take our rankings that we just gave you and add each person up.
You can, I don't think you can do that because like, I gave, I gave Scott a five for experience and a five for education. Jeff may give Scott 20 for education because he has.
No, I'm talking about, we gave our first and seconds.
But the problem is, is your definition of scale could be so much different. It could skew it so much, I don't think you can do that. I think it's got to be, here's your one, two, here's my one. Because we, you know, what you believe is a five and I believe is a five are totally different things.
Okay. And when we provide the rating form, it's primarily for you to kind of weigh the five candidates and not so much that, you know, what does your score compare to another council member's score? It's so that you can say, okay, here's my one and two, let's start talking about that. So, you know, we don't really get into the numbers at all. It's just, it's helpful for you to create that hierarchy and say who's on top, who's on bottom.
So, I'm more than willing to say if we're a little worried about who I believe is the number, you know, who I said was the number one candidate, I would be totally fine with my number two choice. I'm, if we vote and it's Scott, I'll ride along with it, but I have, I'm gonna be concerned.
Well, I don't want to get back to the place where, where our administrator is needing someone to take him to do everything, because he doesn't know what he's, what he's doing.
I, you know, and again, we don't know what we don't know, obviously. The past experience is a pretty good indicator of future success or failure. I think that, as Frank said, you know, he's going on, totally on experience, and we have two that have drawbacks in different areas. I will say that the departure in, in, from jobs on three days' notice is, is a big flag to me. A departure on a one-day notice after a three-and-a-half-hour meeting, that's, that's a big flag. And, and that was a year and a half ago, and nothing's happened since. So, I think we're picking up in any of those three potential issues. The question is, who's gonna fight hardest for it? And how much does twenty-eight years in private sector compare to the stops in the public sector that we have here? And then how did, I think one of the things we talked about as we were coming into the interview, and one of the reasons interviews are a big part of the scoring, is, can you picture them in now that, with the staff we have? To the point where we have inexperience in the office?
So, we need experience to help that.
Well, who's gonna be the most helpful there of the three? And I'd say, the energy that was shown and the commitment that was shown, that's why I said, I think, the package, as Joel explained it, I think the candidate that has the best chance of success of the three, in my opinion, is Scott. But, you know, Pat's over there, he's got a two-year warranty on this.
Who's gonna train him in? I mean, who's gonna teach him all these things that Frank already knows after many, many years of experience? And, and if it's gonna be you and Mary going into the office every day to try to help him, that isn't, that isn't what we want. That is not, otherwise, maybe we should make the mayor our new administrator. I mean, if we can't find someone that can do that job the way we want it...
I just, I feel like it's gonna be training wheels for the next year, year and a half, and we're gonna get into this frustration because either Jeff is assuming the role of co-administrator for the next year and a half, believing he's gonna help train this person up, which is gonna cause a bunch of transparency issues and why is the mayor in there every day again? Or, we're gonna have somebody that we've run into issues with, we're missing dates, we don't know what's going on, we didn't quite get that documented in the standard work, because we didn't get to it, and we don't know what we don't know. So, I mean, I look at new kid, old pony always works. Old kid, new pony can work. New kid, new pony, never works.
Never heard that in mouth. Mr. Mayor, who was your number two?
Well, with the red flags, I'd say from the interview standpoint, Jason.
Jason was your number two?
But I say, I've got... I just, it didn't feel, Bob had the energy for what we have here.
Really?
But, you know...
He had kind of a low-key personality.
I thought he was a low-key personality. Where did you rank Bob, Mr. Mayor?
Third, just because Zach had no experience. I think Zach's gonna be a superstar somewhere, but he's, he's gotta start out in second somewhere.
It's too bad we don't have a, a little bigger structure, because it would be great to like, beat him into that person, like the step below this, because I, you know...
That's, that's what I say, if he was a second somewhere...
He will be, I agree.
It's like, he just needed like a one-stop somewhere for me to be like, I'm, because he, I thought he did a great job. I thought he did it, he was, he was my number three candidate, but you're right, he didn't make it, because he didn't have the experience that I'm, that I think we probably need.
And I just, I looked at Lisa on the RCA, you know, the, just the lack of examples in, in what she provided, it just, so... I, I put Zach at number four, just because I, I liked him, he just didn't have the experience, I just didn't think the package was...
I liked him, no, but you're right. So, tell us why you chose Lisa?
I chose Lisa basically by default, because in the communications I had and the research that I did, I couldn't vote for Robert and Jason. And then Zach has no experience, so that's why Lisa got my second. I agree with what Councilmember Greenberg said about Scott and his longevity, his answers, his existing network, his willingness to reach out to the league and the other pla, other agencies. He's worked with administrators, he's worked with city staff within his own, his current position, and I like that. He doesn't have the administrator background, but I think that, given what he's done within his own, the company he's worked for, I chose him then as number one.
I think the, the other thing is, it's been a concern of mine for a long time, emergency management. We have contracted law, we have a brand-new fire department, but we've never really done anything for years on any preparation there. Should we have something, we have nobody, you know, even, even our fire chief doesn't have that experience as an emergency manager. And I, you know, I, I weighted that heavily, thinking, if I'm going to a place where the gas line, a six- or eight-inch gas line is, is a problem, and I'm walking into that first? That tells you something about the character too. And I, I do think, you just don't last twenty-eight years at a company if you're not doing something right.
Oh, he definitely came across really well.
I know. Do you know, Pat?
I don't.
So, we're making assumptions on these other two, we don't know his story. Because he's been not there for the last year plus, right?
No, I think it's, oh...
He left last...
Robert was, was January.
Since twenty-twenty-one, so, I mean, I, I don't, I just, that concerns me a little bit too, because when you have twenty-eight years, you would think you would stay on through the duration?
Well, he'd said in his interview, for about five years, he'd been looking at moving to the public sector.
Did you leave your job before you got it, going by?
That's what I was looking for in the internet, because I figured there'd be something there. All they got was company commendations and volunteer of the year and stuff like that. They didn't say anything about separation, I don't know if they normally do.
Well, they can, can they, that can't go up to public, whatever happens, you can't.
If you have a meeting on Tuesday and you're going on Friday, that's, the public sector, that's known, so...
Right, right, but not in the private.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg?
There's some things that he talked about, I think, are probably gonna be a straight-over translation. I didn't say that right, but like, when we ask him, when we ask him about emergency responders, he's like, well, I've, you know, I've worked with the fire and police department and things like that together. So, when it comes to working with them, I, I think that's gonna be like, I think that's gonna be easy, I don't think he's gonna have to be trained in on certain things. Working with staff, managing staff, he's not gonna have to be trained in on that. There's a lot of things that just translate straight over. The other thing about him that I think is, was made in his interview, is that he's not, he doesn't need his hand to be held. I think he's just gonna go and get it done. So, we asked him to do an RCA, he's probably never done one before. But he did the research to go and do an RCA. So, he didn't have the information that he needed, so he said he called up Anoka County, he called up other city's administrators to find out what he needed to be done, and he, he made an RCA that I, I liked and ranked very high. So, I think he has within him the trust of the just go and do it. So, when he's in there and he needs to get something done in the office, whether, whatever it be, and he doesn't know how to do it, I think he's gonna find out what he needs to do. So, I don't think he'll be calling us for assistance, maybe he might, but I think, he strikes, he has, I'll just get it done. Now, that being said, I completely agree with Jason in that, you know, his experience in city matters is nil. So, I'm curious about Robert Barbian, and how many of us put him high? I mean, he, would he be second place to all of us, except for Mary, you didn't, Robert, you didn't? And that is in, as a result of your research?
And I, and it seems to me both.
So, do we wanna just go through that, like, if one is, fewest number of points is the ranking? If you rank your team one through, your members one through five, the lowest score should theoretically be your candidate, right?
Yeah, and that's what I was kinda bringing up.
That, that does go through what their total number is, it's not points, it's just your ranking, and then we say...
It's just your rank.
The lowest number should theoretically be the...
Theoretically, I'll give you who...
You mean your ranking in your own head? Or you have to go by these numbers?
We have to give someone all the numbers and they have to add them all up.
Oh, no.
Or just give me your top three, and then I'll just assign one, two, three, whoever...
So, the other thing too, that we got from Pat on Mr. Barbian, was his last two locations. He, two of his last locations, employment, he resigned one, and then the next one is unable to resolve difficulties within the council, and apparently, would have soon resigned then too. So, I...
I got two years, six months, and three years.
So, what about Jason, what was his?
Jason doesn't address it.
Huh?
Jason doesn't address his...
Jason didn't say why he left?
I don't know anybody about that.
He just, the, the public information and the, the reference was, on April twelfth, he announced April fifteenth was his last day, and he didn't have a place to go. And, and the reference said, they were okay with that, and that reference said they wouldn't hire back. Something is a mess when you leave on three days' notice at a position that high-profile is. And Rogers is appointed. And the plan is right in the heart of all of that, so...
Jason, did you say you called City of Rogers?
A friend of mine's on the council. So, I asked him what the, I said, what's the deal? He said, his just feedback was, he wanted to be a city administrator more than he wanted to be in developer role, so... The purpose, the party was mutual. So, he's like, he's hardworking, he's gonna do what's best for the city. So, that was kinda his feedback. But, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I mean, it's like, I understand there's concerns there too, I just, like, I wanna weigh the concern of that versus, if we put somebody in there with zero experience, who the heck is gonna be in there? It's like, I don't know that this team, it shouldn't be this team's role to be in there to help train them up. It's like, we need somebody to go in there and bring the staff to this level, and get us to the whole, what should we have for a city setup? What should the staff look like? Mary brought that up in a couple of different examples. He's not gonna know, because he doesn't have the experience of what are the roles and responsibilities for each one of these positions, and what does it take to do bonding? What's it take to do the budget? What does it take to do all that? It's like, I, so that, it's like, I'm fine with, I'm fine with almost, I'd take a chance on Lisa before I'd take a chance on him. She at least has some experience in this, and that was, you know, I, I mean, to be honest, I would take Zach over both of those, over that candidate, because he has a strong background education-wise, he's done the budgeting. We're concerned about his potential leadership, but in terms of, I wanna be a servant leader, I mean, and if you listen to like his, his answers, he's definitely had, doesn't have the experience and hasn't done it before, but he is definitely saying the same, I'm a good communicator, work hard. I mean, it's the same generic answers as I felt we got from some of the other candidates.
That's true.
So, I, that's, I mean, that is like my biggest concern. Again, we're gonna vote on it, if you, people, if this team doesn't believe that is a concern, and we think we're gonna roll in there and Frank's gonna leave and this guy's gonna step in, and it's gonna be running smooth, and it's gonna not be any issues, that would be, that will surprise me.
Well, that's why I bring up, you know, the second choice, which was Robert Barbian, and I think we should at least talk about him.
Yeah. I'm, I'm fine with Robert as well. Like, I think he can do the job, I think, he didn't interview quite as well, and I felt like he was a little bit more, he was way more into the, I'm gonna say, the development piece than we probably are accustomed to, and, you know, making those connections, but at the same time, I'm like, he also really seemed like he respected the, the role, and said the right words on the comp plan and following that, and talking about what's the priority of the, of the council, and making sure we're adhering to that. So, I'm, I'm good with that as well.
But Jason seemed to have good, good response from where, where was it, Greenfield or something?
Maple Blaine.
Maple Blaine. He even said that they even talked to him.
I'm getting cold.
Oh, for heavens sake.
I'm gonna go get my sweatshirt.
Or you can turn, on the light switch there is a, like, it's like a dimmer knob, but it's the fan. You can turn the fan down to...
Jason had a, see what's, what happens to someone like, I'm a kindergarten teacher. It's gonna be personality, how they come across, warmth, that sort of thing. I don't feel like Jason had a lot of that, but I do think he had the experience. And he seemed to have a good record in the past, they asked him to come back to the place he was before. You wouldn't ask somebody to return if they were a dud.
No, it depends on who.
Huh?
Depends on who replaced him.
Well, yeah, maybe, maybe you're right.
All right, Mr. Mayor, what's your thoughts on Robert Barbian?
Well, I go back to the, the interview. He, he had us, had the questions repeated a couple of times, but if you, if you look at, we asked for team experience. Well, the first one, why now then, he never addressed why now then. You know, he talked about development, he talked about, he works well with folks who wanna get things done, establishing Princeton as a destination location. But the question was, why now then, and why, why are you the best for now then? And now then never came up. So, as I, I was going through that type of thing, management style, get things done, do business, passionate about public sector. You know, back to Jason's point, what are the specific examples of, of these things? Describing a team he recently led, there was no team evidence, there was his story versus team success. You know, so that's type of things, as I was looking at, the answer to the question, how, how did your work actions benefit previous employers? I could list twelve items, but he didn't list any. Those types of things, that's, that's what I... Those types of things, that's, that's what I was noticing, the, you know, budgeting and financial, that's his strength. The Richmond, he got grants and Foley, where he was there for two years as the administrative clerk treasurer, he did the budget and leases. Or budget, easy once you get the magnitude, is what he said. So I was just looking at the details. Questions for us, do you have any questions? When will the decision be made? And he mentioned sailing on the weekends and he could start as long as it was 10 o'clock like Frank's doing and there'd be some weeks of transition. I'm just looking at the package thinking, okay, again, do you want somebody that has some experience in, in short terms in multiple cities, some in Minnesota, some in Wisconsin? Are they gonna be as aggressive getting it done? I, you know, we talked about the network, as Pat said, I've got the LMC sitting here right here, just to make sure everybody knows, it's not the one of the things you wanna put in there. And with Lisa, I even took a drink out of it when we're asking about network. But it, you know, it didn't, it didn't come up as to what the network was. And so I think that if you're talking about people that, that don't need, I, I think there's gonna have to be some involvement, as there has been with Frank, just to, you know, as, as long as Frank is willing to stay around and show them the ropes, the rest of us aren't that necessary to be there. But if there's, if there's questions, who are they gonna go to for those questions? And I think, again, do you have a network in this area? Jason said he did know some people in Anoka County. Cotton knows people in Anoka and Sherburne, he knows our neighbors, if he's been, I don't know how long, he said he was on the police reserve in Elk River, but obviously you know people in that community, those are the people you're likely gonna be going to. Who's, who's your network? Well, I got the new person in Saint Francis, a new person in Ramsey that I'm already working with, and I've got close relationships in Elk River and, I don't know, he said something about Oak Grove. You know, I would, between the league and those people, I'm gonna be asking, that's where most of the questions are gonna go. And that was one of the things, you know, back to what we had before, the clerk treasurer was going to clerks asking for help. And when that didn't work out, she said she started going to fire departments and calling other administrators. I don't think, you know, this person's, you know, these people would be looking to clerks and fire chiefs to answer questions about how they run the city. You know, did they put Frank on speed dial if he allows it? I don't know. I'm gonna guess the-
Yeah, Frank will be on his boat, he'll never get a hold of him.
If I can get it off the lift. So does, does success in the private sector translate to success in the public sector? I think we're gonna have challenges throughout.
Where did you rank Jason?
Third, but I'm beginning to rethink my rankings.
Well, I mean, as your ranking is, that's fine, so.
Well, yeah, but, but I didn't really think through some of the stuff and the fact of the matter is we don't have, we have a staff that walked out and so we have so little experience in that office anymore and we need, we need experience in there, that's what I think, someone who knows what it means to be an administrator. And I just think we're bringing now someone else who has no experience, just like we've been doing.
Well, and again, public sector, so, so how much of-
But I don't, I don't see that, I don't see that as equal. I don't see the public sector equal to what we're looking for.
What do you, what do you see as the difference as far as-
I don't think they have, the, the budgeting isn't the same, there's tons of things that are not the same, because we're, we're a city, we're government, it's not the same as working in a public sector, just because you've got some knowledge in there doesn't mean if you've, you've never done a city budget, you've never done bonding for the city, you've never done, I mean, this stuff is all something he's done in another, but it's, can be entirely different.
Just to clarify, typically when cities bond, they do have to call in another company to assist with that, so, you know, in terms of having somebody internally be responsible for the bonding process-
Totally.
But knowledge, knowledge of the process versus actually-
Yeah, he's not gonna, nobody, I know.
And my concern is we're making a decision on these other two, because since it's a public position, there's a record of it, there's a year gap in this person's employment history that we don't have any ideas and we're just assuming it's all okay.
That's what I brought up earlier, the same exact thing.
So we don't know-
He said, they're all at a disadvantage, because we've got all this information on them.
So it's like, we're saying that one time this is, well, since it's public information, that's a big red flag, here's a year gap in someone's employment and we don't know why. It could be the same red flag. It's, seems odd to me, after 28 years, you would leave that company if you were doing that well.
What would it involve to start over? Well, that's what I'm trying to do, is I'm trying to-
We're not starting over, we're making the call tonight, Frank. We're gonna do it soon.
I just didn't hear it going anywhere near that direction.
And-
Unless you wanna take Zach.
I, I will say that in dealing with-
Zach, everybody thinks he's okay, but-
I would take it's, I would take it's on Zach before I take a chance on Scott.
Everybody liked him, but that's, there's someone with no, not much experience.
Well, there's, not only not, not experience on either level, I mean, like you said, he's never supervised anybody.
He's just a kid.
But he's got the public, I mean, he at least has public sector, he's got more than enough education for what we want him to do and he's at least been in that role for a couple of years for the departments where we need him to be in, so he is familiar with that.
Yes.
And in terms of hungry, kid's hungry, the person is hungry.
Yes.
So-
He wants this and he'd work hard and he's, and he's smart enough to do what it takes to get, to keep on learning and get it all together.
So, I mean, my, when I look at it, it's like, he lacks the direct leadership, the direct supervision that we have been looking for, so I would say that is the risk. Scott has direct leadership, he has no experience and doesn't have any education in that pri, in the public sector to, to make up for the lack of experience in the public sector. That is the concern, cause there are differences between the public sector and the private sector.
Well, everyone admits that.
And he has none in either, in the public.
So you, Mr. Mayor, do I have to still say, call you Mr. Mayor? It's getting late, it's 8:10. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
So you, out of the, out of the two we've been talking about, you prefer Jason, your, your choice was Jason over Bob? Is that correct? For your ranking?
And for my ranking, yes.
Okay. But your top choice is Scott.
Yep.
And you had Jason winner, third or second?
I had him third, I believe he was a good candidate as well. You know, I think about some of the things that the mayor said, as far as the research done and same with Mary about research done, I didn't do any of that, but I was just listening to them, those are concerns, but you have legitimate concern as well, whereas that year experience-
Yeah.
Or that year of unemployment, you know?
We, we don't know if it's a year, it's some, some time in 2021, whether it's end or beginning.
So is there additional information that would benefit the council in making their decision?
No. We, we have to make the call tonight, we're making the call tonight.
Well, Jason, this is, this is, I just want you guys to know, I don't wanna get stuck as the swing again, I want us to actually pick someone without me being the swing. Does that make sense?
And what I-
It's a difficult thing.
What I was gonna say is if we have a question, we can call, I, I inform the candidates as they're walking out the door, that I will be calling them tonight with the results. If you wanted to call a candidate or two and ask an additional question, that-
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I, I mean, it really isn't gonna-
So here, here it is for me, Jason.
It isn't gonna sway.
Here, here it is for me. We got, we got three people who like this one candidate and we got three people who like the number two candidate, we could almost put those as equals. Is there anything about these two that nudges out the vote to make us all swing one way or the other? We got Scott, we got Robert, is there something about each one that could convince us all to vote for one or the other without making, like I said before, I just, I don't wanna be that person again. I'd rather we talk it through and find out something.
When I ranked it, I mean, I ranked Robert the same experience as Jason, I ranked the education the same, he did the interview quite as well as Jason, so that's why I ranked him number two.
Do you think maybe it was because of his personality? Being a quieter guy?
No, I, I mean, again, I kinda go back to situation, task, action, result, and if they don't give a good star, I rank it potentially lower, you know, and it's like, it's gotta, you know, it was a one, two, three type thing, so it had to be pretty bad for me to give somebody a one, so he got a few more twos than, than Jason, so.
I consider him to be less risky in you, in the lens that you're portraying, I consider him to be less risky than Scott.
Yeah, I, I mean, that, I thought Scott seemed to be, like, personality-wise, a super nice guy.
Yeah, personable, very personable.
I think he would be good from a boss standpoint, I think he's proven that. I'm, my hangup is like, no experience, no education, and that is not something that we've demonstrated that we can't make that work here.
Well, we sure don't wanna have what happened again.
No, and I, I don't wanna be here for four hours, three nights in a, three weeks in a row for doing this again, it's like, we have good candidates to pick from.
Well, I thought the answers by Scott were not cozy answers, they were not, this is what they wanna hear, he was drawing out experience and experience is, is what we're looking for, a certain answer.
So Scott, I gave him a one on the second question, describe your supervisor and management style and how facilities, how that facility's team worked. He's direct, he's a team player, clear communication, good people skills, firm but fair, that's what his answer was.
No, he said he meets weekly with staff, he closes the loop to make sure that there's, there's, clear to staff, clear to council, closes the loop, listens to staff ideas. He has vast experience with contractors, cause the question was council, staff and contractors. So with the staff, he was a team player, open, clear communication, listened to staff ideas, with the council, make sure it's clear to staff, the information is clear from the council, close the loop with the council, meet weekly with staff, give progress reports to the council and has lots of experience dealing with contractors in his business. That's what I put down on that.
So, Mr. Mayor, didn't, when we started the process, we had mentioned something about military.
Who was military in the group?
Scott.
Scott.
Pat, what was our discussion on military?
Uh, that yes, we provided points and those were awarded at the beginning, so that was provided previously through Scott, he did ask for those points and was awarded those.
I think we gave him a lot of credibility and interest and probably swing, swung a lot of our thinking was when he started to talk about all his involvement and now and already and all the people he knows and communicates with, uh, and the police, the Elk River police, the, um, the fire departments he's worked with, dealing with, uh, all, all those things, the car, heritage festival, threshing show, the bank, he banks that, I mean, those things were all, uh, big, uh, pull, pull, pulls us in, it's a personal thing and so we, we were pulled into that, because we're thinking this person is already very invested and cares about our city. So that immediately puts that feeling, a feeling in you, but it necessarily doesn't mean that ability.
Well, I think, I think the accountability, because he does know the people in town here, I mean, this is, you know, working, working with our bank, that's, I mean, one of the people he's gotta work with, he already does that.
That's what I say.
Working with the businesses in town.
Those are the things that will get in, but-
What's the training roster and who's gonna bring him up to speed? Because zero experience, he starts Tuesday, Frank's gone, what is the training roster and who's gonna do it?
Well, I, you know, again, depends on how quickly Frank runs. Frank is, is, can change his mind, but he's indicated he'll, he'll be around as long as, as he's welcome and is necessary. I think that to Scott's point, he said that he's working with the league already, so his, his training won't be league programs, it'll be his peers in the communities around us, but no.
I, I can't vote for the guy. If you guys want him, I'm gonna vote no, but if that's the way the vote goes, I'm not voting for somebody with no experience. We, we have proven we can't do that. So if you believe we can and you believe he's got all the other attributes that you like, let's vote and move on, cause if we can't get any alignment on Robert or Jason that we can't support, it's like, I'm, I don't wanna like keep debating this back and forth, because I'm not, I'm not gonna vote for the guy, it's like, he has zero experience and he doesn't have any education in the public sector and that is a huge problem, giving, we have two staff people with a combined experience of seven months each and we have an interim that wants to go golfing and that has been here two-
Way too long.
Three months more than he said he was gonna be here. And we're gonna ask him to extend it again, because we're gonna bring somebody in that has zero experience and have to have Frank train him. I mean, that feels like a-
Well, and Frank can't do all that training, even in two weeks or three weeks.
Frank's done a great job, but he's also had to deal with each wind gust that's come at him and he's had to say, what do I do, where do I send it, who's the contact? And he's had to learn it, this specific city, he's had to learn as those things have come.
Right.
So he didn't hop into this role.
And he's leveraged 45 years of his prior city planning and city administrator experience to get that done.
He still had to find out who he had to call, when it was due, how much was this, he still had to figure all that out.
I totally agree, but that's like, that's like me walking into a new factory and saying, okay, there's problems here, but I've been here before and I've done this. You're talking, somebody that's in the private sector is going into- in the private sector is going into someplace he's never been and trying to uncover rocks that he doesn't even know what's underneath them. Because Frank's done a great job on fixing the rocks that he's found. There's a ton more that are probably over there that we don't know are over there yet. And we want somebody to take that role that Frank has and get it to the next level. We don't want to maintain status quo or have entropy and have some stuff fall apart while we're in training for two years. And I, that is, that I think is the, that is the gap. I mean, I would rather take a chance on Zach and assume that he's going to come up to speed managing three or four people than zero experience. So, that's my, I mean, that's.
Yeah, so.
But again, it's like, I'm, I, like I said when we started, I may not like the candidate, but I fully support the process. If everybody has their own look at it and that's why it's a diverse team, right? If everybody looked the same and felt the same, it would be easy. Everybody's going to say, here's my number one candidate, here's my number two candidate, just like we did with the, um, the planning and zoning, right? Not everybody that everybody thought was the best candidate got in there, but the candidates that got in there seem to be doing pretty good based on different, different people's perspectives.
We were more pretty like-minded though.
So, I, I'm just like, Jason, you won't vote for him. Will, will you, if the council decides that, will you just give your support?
I mean, when we walk out of here, we walk out of here as a team, right? It's like, this is why we have the debate. When we walk out, it's like, that's our guy, that's who we're going with. If there's problems, we're going to have to try to figure it out.
Mr. Mayor, can one, can either you or Mary be convinced of Robert?
No.
Can you guys fall back on Zach?
Now, like I said, I, I liked his personality, I liked his drive, I just, cautious, I would say it. And we, we have some employees here that.
Addressing personalities, perhaps? Addressing various personalities.
I mean, that's the coaching with Zach. I mean, that's what, it would be, it would be, being a manager is what the coaching, that's his gap that I see has to cause.
Yeah.
Who's it?
Zach.
All work on Zach.
And that's, and that's why I say that, that managing a large number of people in a, in a volatile field brings management skills that I think are necessary to train the, the young staff that we have over here and work with the experienced staff that's on the technical side of what we do as a city. And I, I think that Scott bridges that.
So, Mary, Scott was your first candidate?
Yes.
He was your first candidate? He was your first candidate and he was your first candidate? He was your second candidate?
Yeah, but I, I won't vote for him now. I changed my mind. I can change my mind after the debate. I thought, he's right. We ought to have been down this road, it did not work. Why do we want to go down it again?
It feels like it's three to two. Do we make the motion and vote?
Well, one last chance.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, and Mary, would, would you, could you agree that Robert would be a safer vote because he has experience in city?
I would say no, based on the fact that he's been, he's resigned or relieved of duty his last two positions.
But we don't know that about Scott. He could have been.
And I, and I understand that, I understand.
But, but he's also, as, as Pat was saying, in a very tight market. As an administrator with experience, he has not found a position in a year and a half.
You could make the same call on Scott. It's a super tight job market out there. He hasn't worked since 2021 and he's got 28 years in leadership.
So, why? I'm guessing, I, I don't know why, but maybe after 28 years, he wanted some time off and he's starting to, I don't know, I don't know. And we don't know that, we don't know that.
But that's why, I mean, we're, we're holding against two candidates and this one is okay with that.
So, yeah, so back to Jason, third place. Your first pick.
He's my first pick. I would say, uh, he's my first pick. There's history that's because it's public, if it was private, he would be the glaring first candidate. But because it's a public and we have a record of this meeting, it's a big red flag.
Well, it's not just what's public there, it's the people that have worked with him.
But you can call people who worked with you, Mayor, and would say, huh. And that wouldn't be what you wanted to be known for and who you are. But you're going to have people that might not feel that they, they felt good working with you. So, I mean, how can we judge that? It's not really fair. Because we don't know the situation, the person you talked to, what was the situation? Why didn't they get felt that way? What had happened? I, I mean, there's so much variables in someone's opinion of someone that we don't know about. We don't have any clue, the background, why they feel this way or what might have happened for them to have that attitude. And maybe someone else thinks the guy did a great job.
I also kind of lean on the fact that the person that most of us in this room believe has been most successful in this role doesn't have Scott on his number one or number two list. And he heard all the same interviews, asked all the same questions that we did. So, the person that's been successful wouldn't pick him to replace him. So, that has to have some weight to.
Is Jason more palatable, palatable, palatable? Can't get it out today.
He's my number three. If Jeff and Mary don't bite on Robert, well, then the next question would be, would they bite on Jason?
And, and again, based on what feedback I got from other administrators and council members, council members who worked with him, administrators who knew people that knew of him.
Awesome.
Did you get any background communications with people who knew Scott?
Like I said, the only thing I found is I tried to find something on the internet where I could go searching and I, I got commendations, but no contacts that.
Have we asked Pat's opinion? You said absolutely neutral.
He's neutral.
He's neutral.
He can't.
I stay out.
He's Switzerland.
He provides candidates in the matrix.
He's got some of these candidates that are finalists in other cities right now too, so.
He has to be careful.
Don't want to say anything that harms those chances in case those cities and councils watch this, so.
Well, we were asked to give our rating, we gave our rating. There was one candidate that got three, one that got one and another one that got one. I would move that we go with the candidate that got the three votes. So, it would be Scott Lerner.
And we'd vote again because there was a lot of debate, so.
No, but even those, Joe.
Oh, yeah, if you have three, you're still there, then what's the sense?
That was the number one candidate.
Yeah, okay.
And, and to council member Greenberg, I, you know, I understand your concern about being the third vote on things, but you, doing your due diligence and listening to all of the candidates, excuse me, you on your own came up with Scott and I think it would be unfair for you to feel that you need to change what you had come up with on your own without knowing what anyone else was thinking. Just because you don't want to be the third vote, that's not right, that's.
I'm, I'm just trying to have a committee member working with fellow, other fellow committee, committee members to come to a conclusion.
We're trying to have a consensus here.
But, but I, you know, I followed Pat's recommendation, his methodology. I thought it was absolutely sound from beginning to end. And this was my conclusion. So, that being said, I, I'm actually comfortable with who I chose. I just, I followed the methodology and here's where I arrive.
So, I make a motion that the city council move forward with offering an employment contract to Scott Lerner for the position of city administrator in the city of Malton.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Saying and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Me.
Me.
Motion carries.
All right, we got it.
So, I, I do need another motion. The next motion is to authorize me to work with, is it the personnel committee or whoever the council would like to start the negotiations process? So, whoever the council decides. But, so nothing is finalized at this point. What we need to do is I need to, I need to start discussions and I need a couple individuals from the council to set the parameters.
The nomination committee to follow through with the, um, with the contract and the hiring of the proposed candidate.
I would second that.
A motion by council member Alder, second by council member Rainville. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, John, I thought you brought some new candidates.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
I wish it would have been an easier decision for you.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, we are adjourned.